And all councilors are present.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, the council is, we run our meetings by Robert's Rules of Order, except for those items that are set at our organizational meeting every year after the election. We just had one last Monday, Tuesday. Item number four, adoption of the Ellsworth City Council minutes from the following meeting, October 21st, 2024, regular meeting. Second? Thank you. Discussion?
Abstaining because I wasn't there, which is why I didn't second it just yet.
Thank you.
Should I not second?
No, you were.
Oh.
I was in the audience.
It's fine.
I think we'll be okay.
I think we're okay, yeah. All those in favor abstained? Item number five is presentation of awards. There aren't any awards this evening. So item number six, city manager's report.
Thank you, Chair Beal, and welcome to Steve and Tabitha. It's great to have you here. So I've been telling staff that it's, these new council members are a lot like the ones we restaffed. Steve is back and we have a member of the Arbor Commission. But really excited for this, this next round. I think this is my first cycle with seeing a new onboarding of council. I know, Tabitha, we're going to schedule a city tour. Steve, I don't know if you got to do one the last time around, but you're welcome to resee the, the facilities if you'd like, but it should be, it should be fun. And also, Patrick, excellent choice in coat tonight with the wool herringbone.
Thank you.
Love to coordinate more going through the wintertime. Start off on a scheduling note for folks. We have the tree lighting coming up on Saturday, November 30th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. You might have walked in here and seen some of the activities for setting that up. So there'll be some friend, family-friendly activities, letters to Santa, games. The lighting will take place at 5:00 p.m. sharp. There'll be some hot cocoa cookies and fire pit tables and should be a really fun time. It's also Small Business Saturday, so folks looking to come out and support our local businesses for holiday shopping, please do. I'll, I'll be there and hopefully do my holiday shopping early and support some local businesses in the works as well. There's also for Christmas, there's the Toyland Parade, which will be at 4:00 p.m. on Sunday, December 8th. The lineup begins at 3:00 p.m. at the Ellsworth Middle School at the parking lot behind the Mill Mall off State Street.
It's December 8th?
Oh, sorry, the, sorry, it's the, um, the 4th, right?
7th.
Sorry, the 7th. 7th is the, the inclement weather is, is December 8th, Sunday. It's 7th Saturday at 4:00 p.m. for the actual, thank you for that reminder. Well, update on the deputy city manager drop posting. We've received just shy of 200 applications for the role and have been very busy with the HR and hiring committee teams. We've, I think, done 10 to 15, 15-minute phone screeners to really gauge seriousness of the candidates, and we've moved forward to second interviews with some of the top selections. We're down to kind of the final six, which we're going to be doing the final interviews with. So, and I've emailed city council, if you'd like to be a part of any of those final interviews, please let me know, and we'll try to make time available for you to weigh in on the final candidates. So, the comp plan, there's a workshop on December 5th at 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. So thanks to all the hard work from Matt and all the planning board team and all the community that's been involved in that process. Really looking forward to that. Kind of seems like the final planning piece for us to have as a team to look through the comp plan, the business attraction plan, the asset mapping. We'll have a lot of the kind of high-level strategic documents to really put together a strategic implementation plan as a, as a city to kind of align our own work plans towards over the next year and years to come. So excited about that process. Mentioned Maine Organics. I know we had a workshop on that recently. There was a fine issued or a violation issued recently. We're still working through, I think, the next steps. We're gonna either have another workshop or we may just bring straight to a council meeting for an update on potential additional legal avenues or updates to the smell ordinance. And we're gonna, we're working with our attorney, John Hamer, on just getting the council the briefing on the kind of full legal options. Last time around, we talked to the DEP. I'm sort of saw what their action items were, and we took away a bunch of action items for ourselves. Seems like that's kind of the last piece that council will need to know what their available options are as we, you know, head into the winter and look towards next steps there. So, also, big congratulations to Cara and the whole Heart Ellsworth teams on the Main Street designation, which we went to a few weeks ago. That was really an incredible event down in Bitterford. We also got some great gifts. We got two nice big Welcome to Ellsworth signs and the Main Street Historic Downtown designation. They're really cool-looking signs. So we're working with Maine DOT and, and others to kind of figure out location, putting them up. So kind of first step on, on new signage around here, which should be great. The, I know tonight we have a personnel review for, hopefully if we don't have to table it, this doesn't go too long. I've got a fair amount of stuff I'm hoping to go over. It's, you know, it's, it's my check-in, and it's kind of the same process for SMART goals and performance valuations that we've been working on with the rest of the staff. So I'm looking forward to that tonight as well. And then just one last big thank you to our city staff that worked on the election, put in a ton of hard work, not just during the election, but before and afterwards. And one of our staffers even slept here one night because there was so much work to be done. But really big thank you to Tina, Caitlin, Sue, Ebony, and Marcia and Amanda, the whole front office team, the police, and then all the volunteers from the city who came out. You know, it was very well organized and a ton of turnout, lots of vote throughout the entire day, even with a ton of, of voting, or mail-in ballots, or sorry, early ballots that were submitted. I was actually surprised about how many people showed up. So it was a, a great effort here in City Hall. And that is it for the city manager report.
Any questions to the manager?
I have a question, and you may not know the answer, but I had heard secondhand that in addition to the election, the city of Ellsworth found time to register 270 new voters. And I, I may have the number wrong because I'm repeating what I was told. I think that's awesome that new voters could come in election day and get registered to vote and vote. That's an amazing amount of people on that such a busy day. Now, I don't know if that's common or not common, but I, I heard that, and it's very impressive that, that not only did they vote, but you found time to get them registered to vote. That's 270 people, if that's number is correct, that would not have voted without some kids...
We're still working on getting them all in there. I'm not sure on the number, but we did run out of cards and had to photocopy some to make new cards.
But they were able to vote?
Yep.
That's awesome.
Yeah, well, again, I'm not sure about the number, but I was, I know Ashley from her finance department was volunteering, and she just had a huge envelope of them. And I could see her just all day helping pick people for me. I also went to the other two wards, and they said the same thing, lots of new voters. They said it was kind of a mix of longtime Ellsworth residents that are kind of first time voting, which was interesting. Some people that did have some accessibility issues, but really wanted to come out and voice her. And then a lot of new, new families that are kind of come into town over the past year, and, and a lot of people that just hadn't been voting for a while, too, and just really felt compelled to come out. So it was, it was great to see.
Item number seven, committee reports. I'd like to start with the appointment of Casey Hansen as a full Arbor Commission member. We all know Casey. We all read her resume. Move to approve. Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Ananamous. Any other committee reports?
Briefly, Recreation Commission meets tomorrow morning, E30 here in council chambers. As always, public are welcome. We'll be discussing, amongst other things, the tree lighting, which Charlie mentioned briefly, an upcoming ice festival, and discussions about the ice rink. So if any of those things interest you or you have ideas, come to the meeting and voice, voice your opinions.
I also, I do need to get with the city clerk's office to get the list of committees and who is on those. I will have those, hopefully, I'll, it's not their fault, it's my fault that I haven't caught up with them. I will get that list out and get it to everybody so you can choose which committees you'd like to be on, and then if you'd like to change or remain on the ones that you're on, just let me know. I'll hopefully catch up with you sometime this week, Ebony.
Or less, like to email to everyone if you'd like.
That'd be great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I want to report on the Arbor Commission. Just last Thursday, the highway, the city highway crew and the Arbor Commission worked together to, or that was last Wednesday, to dig out nine trees out of the Jordan Homestead Nursery, which was the first, that was the first go of that kind of project. I've only ever done it with real tree spades, so we were doing it with excavators and by hand. That went really well. We moved the trees over to High Street, adjacent from Goodwill there, and with four volunteers, two Arbor Commission members, and three of the highway crews, we planted eight trees out over there. We also did a memorial tree planting over at Nolton Park. So it was a really productive two couple of, two days. On top of that, we actually received a donation of $8,000 worth of trees from Plants Unlimited that we got unloaded and winterized in the nursery to be planted out in the spring, which we currently don't have a plan for, but we will have one in the spring. And we also spent last week conducting nine interviews for Community Tree Steward, which is a position that's funded by the Maine Conservation Corps. And they will be working with us full-time from January, February to November of 2025, helping us complete our tree inventory, working with the planning department to determine rights of ways, developing and cultivating more community tree stewards through volunteers, projects in education, organizing professional development and training for the city staff, working with the highway department and the Arbor Commission to plan and organize planting projects, working in our nursery and with our street trees, and working with our communication director to get the good word out about trees. So very big week last week for the Arbor Commission.
Mr. Warren? Yeah. Anything else? Item number eight, citizens' comments. This is the point in our meeting that we allow people to come up and speak on any item that is not on the agenda. We did change, at the organizational meeting, we did change our, our rules, and I would like to say that we, we are keeping it to three minutes. We're asking that what you talk about or you would like to speak about relates to matters of municipal business and the business of the council, and that we politicking and political activities, including campaign endorsements, are not allowed in citizen comments. Does anyone like to speak?
Good evening, councilors. John Munahan, lifetime Ellsworth resident who lived at 157 Shore Road for 54 years. Like to read the First Amendment to the Constitution. Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, of the right of the people to peacefully to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances. I noticed that the city council decided to save time and limit public comments to municipal businesses. That's a great idea. I'm glad that you decided to do that. Therefore, I've done my best to comply with your wishes, and I really only have one area of municipal business to address. I want to encourage you as our city council to make every decision with one ultimate goal in mind. Please ask yourself the following question. Will my vote and input on any item reduce, or at the very least, hold steady our current property taxes? Or will those decisions increase our taxes? In my opinion, any Ellsworth property tax increase this year is unacceptable. I believe Ellsworth's voting citizens did vote that way this year, and we will vote that way next year in November 2025. So council, please weigh closely your financial decisions. For me personally, I'm working to find two other candidates for city council next November 2025.
Are we not in politicking?
In addition to myself.
This is, this is Mr. Lurie.
I'm excited to see what will join being pledging to vote no on any decision that might potentially increase our Ellsworth property taxes.
Thank you.
I've got conclusion.
Oh, I thought you were done. Excuse me.
In conclusion, I believe this year's election showed that the vast majority of Ellsworth property taxpayers wanted spending and property tax reform. There were approximately 6,000 votes for Republican and independent candidates versus 2,000 for the Democrat candidate. That's good news for Ellsworth taxpayers. The bad news for Ellsworth taxpayers is the candidates who shared the reduced spending and property tax platform split the vote, so we didn't get a right to lower property taxes candidates elected. I'm committed and I encourage this council and our community to only support three candidates maximum in the 2025 November election, who will sign pledges, and this is my key point, to vote no on any item that will increase Ellsworth property taxes. Councilors, fellow citizens of Ellsworth, please join me in an organized effort to ensure success with our lower Ellsworth property taxes revolt policy at this coming November election. Remember, policy, policy, policy. Our city council's spending determines our city property taxpayers ending. Thank you, John Munahan.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments?
Good evening. I'm PJ Keenan with the Ellsworth Area Chamber of Commerce. As Charlie mentioned, the tree lighting and the Christmas parade. We also have a Christmas in Ellsworth Committee that has been meeting regularly since the summertime. We have a website called Christmas in Ellsworth, which has all of the festivities happening along with our parade and tree lighting. And hopefully this week, we will have postcards out promoting the tree lighting and the parade, and along with the website, Christmas in Ellsworth, with a whole bunch of really great festivities, encouraging people to come to Ellsworth and encouraging our residents to get out and celebrate. Thank you.
PG, is that ChristmasinEllsworth.org or?
ChristmasinEllsworth.com.
Dot com?
Yeah. If I'm wrong, then it's dot org. If you type in Christmas in Ellsworth, it brings it right up.
Oh, okay. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
It is dot com.
It is dot com?
It is.
Thank you. Did you want to speak?
If I was, she'll be last, then never mind. In reading the article in newspaper the other day about potential sites for the new courthouse, I was rather, I was struck by two things. At the last city council meeting, or at least the last reports about city council meeting, oh, did I identify myself? I didn't.
You didn't?
Fred Byer.
Just a reminder, it's three minutes, so.
Nine American abs, and I've been here for 12 years. And, but anyway, two things struck me when reading the article. One is, well, in comparing it to articles in previous weeks, and when the idea of, let's look for alternative sources of income, let's put up parking meters, which I guess had a different reception by depending who you were. But in light of that, looking for different areas to, I realize it's, expenses going up and there's reasons to be concerned about tightening the budget and raising taxes. And reading about the way this, the article in newspaper seemed to project the idea that the city hall, or cities seem to be in favor of moving it to a different location over behind, over there. I don't know where I'm at.
Off High Street, yeah.
And the cost of the road was estimated for 1.2 million by the, by the county, and city hall said, or the city came up and said, oh, you could do it for several hundred thousand dollars, which my way of thinking sort of shows, it's doubtful that the $200,000 level is, is really achievable. But then in, when it came to, what it boils down to, the concept of spending money and on development and so forth, I don't like the congregation, the, taking that present location and putting it where there already is a lot, a lot of traffic. And putting it out on the Surrey Road would get, would relieve some of that traffic congestion. But also, the thought that the city is willing to spend several hundred thousand dollars on a road to appease a relatively few number of people who live on a busy road anyway, who I just don't think, I just think it's unconscionable that we should look in a time of tight budget, spend several hundred thousand, or even think of submitting several hundred thousand on a road out there when we're having a hard time maintaining the roads that we have in the city right now. And it's, there's something wrong with having the city pays, spent all that kind of money just to appease a relatively few number of people out on the Surrey Road, which is a busy road anyway. And is my minutes up, three minutes?
It is. Thank you.
Okay, oh, shut up.
Thank you, though. Anyone else? Item number nine, councilor comments. Have any comments?
Just briefly, just to keep the conversation going from this previous Friday's Finance Committee meeting, talking about creative funding opportunities for Healthy Acadia's projects and things. I'm planning on going tomorrow morning to the county commissioners' meeting. We've kind of gone back and forth in emails a few times about their remaining ARPA funds, which now look like they're sort of earmarked for their new emergency facility they're building, but as directed, potentially from the state, they've been encouraged to create a grant program for municipalities, for nonprofits within those municipalities to apply. So I'm looking to get more information there. It's, it's fairly unclear, and I think that these are just barely developed programs, if at all. So I'll report back with any information that I glean, but I think starting conversations with, with a county is, is a good, is a good place to start. And I really have no idea how they work, so I'm looking forward to learning a little bit about their meetings.
When is that meeting, John?
Tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. in the courthouse. Love to have some buddies come with, if anybody wants to.
And just along the, those lines for, regarding Healthy Acadia, I'm on the board of directors with the organization, and they have opened a new facility, their new headquarters on the Beechland Road, and they're having an open house on Thursday, December 5th from 4:00 to 7:00 o'clock. And I asked if they would be okay if I invited the city council and city manager to attend. It's an open house. It's, it's just, I think, you know, we, Healthy Acadia comes up in conversation somewhat frequently with the council. It's a great organization that does a lot of things for our community. And regardless of how the city is involved with the warming center, I think it'd be a good opportunity for folks to come meet the people that work there and learn more about what Healthy Acadia does for, in our community. So it's December 5th, Thursday, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Beechland Road, their new facility there.
I am embarrassed to say where, on the Beechland Road.
If you're coming off down the bottom of the hill, turn a left to go up the road. It's not too, just right before you start going up the hill on the right.
Is it the old Mary Two Thikers? Mary Two Thikers Place.
Yeah. Time again? 4:00 to 7:00.
We'll have that comp plan meeting at 6:00.
Yeah, and I will, yeah, I was about to say, we'll have to have the comp plan meeting at 6:00, but if folks can make it earlier. Yeah, there's a lot of great people that work for the organization. They do great work, and any and all are welcome.
Anyone else?
I don't want to jump in front of anyone. Did, did, you want to speak?
I'll hold for now.
Are you sure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. I'd just like to say thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth for giving me a second seat or a second term in this seat. I'd like to congratulate Tabitha on her victory. I'm her runner-up, and I'm glad to be here. Several years ago, I remember Cookie Patton, who was a city councillor, saying that her first term she spent learning and her second term she planned on doing. I'm not making that commitment, but I could tell you this, that the first two years of my first term was a huge learning curve. And I feel like I'm honored to get a second term here, to sit in this seat and to cautiously watch over dollars. The first time I was elected, longtime resident Buddy Morrison came to my office and said, "Slow down the spending." Those were his words when he walked through the door. Slow down the spending. I never forgot that. And I would just like to throw out this, that this meeting here, there was over, I don't know what's going to get tabled and postponed, but there was over a million dollars in expenses here. And I would encourage the city of Ellsworth to go on a money diet and start thinking about innovative ways to do things without sending such a rude bill to Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth. Thank you.
Anyone else? Did you have something?
I think, yes. So if there's a challenge in the role that we're in, when we are facing, as we've worked through the budget process, a number of years of, I'm trying to think of the term, deferred maintenance. If you don't fix a cracked window and the window breaks and you sell your house, the new homeowner has to replace the window, whereas if you had fixed it early on, it would have been a maintenance rather than an investment. I believe, having been here for a year and been intensely involved in the budget process, that's the position this council is in, the amount of deferred maintenance on roads, on buildings, on any of our infrastructure, delayed investments that reflect the growth of the, of the city. And I think it's, we are moving forward in this role of being very cost-conscious, very aware of what the overall impact is. Watch Charlie balance, what's the mill rate going to be as we tried to figure out where we were going. Make use of grants, make use of federal funding and state funding when we can, in a way that's responsible so that when each of us is done with our term, we are not leaving a roof that needs to be repaired, a cellar that's leaking, for the next round of councilors. I believe that's the responsible, responsible way to approach. The requests that come to us from city agencies, from city departments, and also from members of the public. In my eight years in the legislature, I learned everybody wants budget cuts, but not, but not my thing. And that's human nature. It's very human to support what you understand and dismiss the things that you either don't understand or that don't have an immediate impact on you or your family or other people that you care about. And so it's a balancing act that we have, and I'm proud of the work that the council has done over the past year doing that. And I look forward to doing more of that as we move ahead. Thank you.
Anyone else? I don't know how you would like to take the items 10 and 11 on the agenda. We're asking that those be tabled. There's some, a public hearing that needs to happen before those can be discussed. A public hearing notice, excuse me. Would you like to take those individually or just a motion to do, to table both at the same time?
Let's take both at the same time. It's just me.
I move to table items 10 and 11 on the agenda at this time.
Second? There's no discussion on a table. Do you want to talk before I get a second? Do you want to talk before I get a second? Councillor Allen?
I do.
That's fine.
But I heard a second already.
I didn't hear anything. I sneeze. There's a weird echo over here.
No, I just, my request is this, is instead of just saying 10 and 11, could we at least say what it is?
Absolutely.
That's my only request.
Want to amend a motion? Thank you.
I'd be happy to. Thank you, Steve. I move that we table item 10, which is council order number 102407, request of the Public Works Director to purchase a backdrop. And in addition to table item, agenda item number 11, council order number 102408, request of the Public Works Director to accept the bid for a loader purchase.
Second. All those in favor? Thank you, Jean Thomas. Thank you for the reminder. Item 12. These are, it's a public hearing for three licenses. I will read the three licenses and hold a public hearing, and then the council will vote, but I'll hold the public hearing on all three licenses at once. Jeff Kelly, Locusts, DBA 86, this, 125 Main Street, for renewal of a city Class B license for liquor and amusement, and renewal of a state restaurant Class III and IV malt liquor and wine license. Squid LLC, DBA Ellsworth Suites, 147 Bucksport Road, for renewal of a city lodging license. NEH 15 LLC, DBA Comfort Inn, 130 High Street, for renewal of a city lodging license. Public hearing is open. Would anyone like to speak on any of these licenses? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. What'd the council like?
Move a perilla of the three licenses?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Jean Thomas. So, we have another table request. Item number 13, I'll read it this time so you don't, presentation by the city planner and economic development director on the city's selection and participation in the U.S. Department of Transportation's Thriving Communities Program. There's a, what, they want, yeah, let me try that one more time. This would like to be tabled, is there, do you want to explain the reason?
Yeah, we're just, we're trying to limit the meeting so we can get to my things at the end here, so pulling off some of the presentations, this one can wait a little bit, there was nothing terribly time pressing on it, but, and we've got another presentation by Matt, our planner, on another topic already tonight, so. But we'll come back.
Could I request we not put that one off too much longer, the thriving communities, just because it's exciting and amiga for folks to hear about it?
If we put it in the motion, is, will it be ready for next month?
Yeah.
Or the timing, is the timing a balancing act?
Yeah, let me, you know, we'll put it in our, in our hoppers.
Next month is a lot of planning anyways, but.
Yeah, with the comp plan next month.
It may actually fit in well with that.
Good.
Well, yeah, let me, let's get to, well, under consideration. And if you sponsor it, then I'll be forced to do it.
Oh, you forget the power I wield.
Do you have a motion to table?
Move to table. Second.
All those in favor? Yes. Item number 14, council order number 112400, discussion potential action on the road and public works, infrastructure, capital investments, consideration as part of a bond anticipation note.
All right, Nate Moore, Finance Director.
Mike Harris, Public Works Director.
There he is. In front of you, you should have a packet, which was discussed also at the Finance Committee meeting on Friday, in regards to the potential bond anticipation that we're looking for the city. A good portion of it, obviously, is going to be used for local roads, which, as previously discussed, something that has been put off for quite some time. I know I'm fairly new here, but a lot of this work needs to get done. And obviously, this is the, the best way we see fit to, to fit in the budget. Any questions, or?
No, if they have any question, I went, I met with the local roads committee, we discussed it, we talked about it at Finance Committee. It's just a reimagining of how we get our roads done right now. Doesn't mean that we're going to do this forever, but for now, in order for us to make sure we get the allocated money and make sure we can get bids out in a timely manner when contractors are looking for work, and the proposal is to ban and then bond for these roads that we want to get paved, that's where I'm at.
Do you want to time out here?
I wanted to make a request, if I could, while you're there. Could you maybe explain to the public this process, instead of just, I mean, we know what it is, but let's explain what that process is, that you're borrowing local money in anticipation of the next step. If you could just take a minute, are you okay with that?
Yeah, if you, but before you do that, has this had a public hearing? Was this advertised?
Yeah, yeah.
It was?
It was advertised, yeah.
It was advertised as a, so this should be a public hearing also, then?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to get better at this.
Yeah, can I, can we make a request that that actually is part of the actual agenda item, public hearing and action on?
Because it has been advertised.
Right, just that, that kind of is a trigger for us to know that it has been advertised in some sense.
Okay. So I am going to reread this before you start, and we, after you finish your explanation and what Councillor Hallen is asking, we will open this up to the public. So this is actually, item 14 is council order zero, council order 112400, public hearing and potential action on road and public works, infrastructure, capital investments, but consideration as part of a bond anticipation note. Thank you. All right, now if you would answer, Councillor Hallen, thank you.
No, I don't want to. No, so the, the bond anticipation note is, it's, to put it, I guess, in layman's terms, I guess, it's, it's like a line of credit. So what we're asking for is this line of credit. So anytime we have to, let's say, for instance, the plow truck's in here, or we're working on roads, that's when we can pull the funds. Once we pull those funds, obviously, that's when you start paying interest on those funds. And what this is, is anticipation for a bond, for a future bond. So this will be, this could potentially go into a future bond in the future, in later years.
So the money that we borrow through the ban?
Through the ban.
Is then the bond basically pays that off, and then we pay that off through the bond process?
Exactly, yes.
Yeah. Over a longer period of time, depending on how the bond is structured.
Councillor Moat might have better descriptions of that, but I mean.
You don't like my description?
Yeah, no, I'm saying, for what I said.
I'm just kidding.
But, I mean, that's, that's how the, the process works. It's, it's a line of credit, the ban is basically a line of credit to get towards the bond, like I said, for future.
People can think of it as like a construction loan.
Yeah. Construction loan, line of credit.
Until you go into permanent financing.
Exactly.
It's interest only. We're not paying down the principal at all, we're just paying interest on the borrowing that, until we turn it into a bond.
Yeah, I should have said that, but yes.
And we try to turn it into a bond as soon as possible.
Exactly.
So you're not paying interest for a long time.
For interest reasons, yeah.
Exactly.
Sort of clear it up, but just a little bit more, you're, this line of credit is available to us to draw down from as there are purchases made, interest only, then when it becomes a bond, it is principal and interest over a longer period of time, and the bond proceeds pays the loan off and it closes.
Exactly.
And you can choose, and there'll be a second, second step to this, I think we talked about this at Finance Committee, but I'll reiterate on what type of bond we go with. Do you want to include in that bond the interest you paid on the ban? You know, there'll be, this isn't, this passes and it moves forward. We'll come back to you with specific prices on some of these projects as we move forward and get further authorization for them, so.
I just wanted Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth to hear.
Yeah.
That process, because it does become confusing.
Sorry. Just to back up even a little further, we discussed it at pretty length, for those that weren't riveted by our budget presentations, five months, six months ago, that one of the reasons that, you know, we did take a fair amount of roads off of the list, and, you know, with the idea that we're trying to spread out this on the taxpayer over multiple years, a lot of this is deferred maintenance on roads that even previous councils had to move forward with to do, but, and, you know, as spending priorities and budget freezes, there wasn't enough spending flexibility within the time that, that they actually went forward. So we really discussed at length during that process, and, you know, it doesn't take an engineering degree to see the condition of a lot of the roads around here, and we really need to kind of make this additional investment. The Roads Committee had discussed these roads in the spring, we finalized that with them last week as well, and we've had two or three discussions at some Finance Committee meetings. There's a much more extensive, I should say, this is kind of the first part of a much larger infrastructure, one, five, 10-year capital improvement plan process, which is also kind of fallen by the wayside over the last few years, even though it is required by charter that we have a plan detailing every, every piece of infrastructure in the city that may or may not be bands, everything from fire trucks to pump house points, so all of our depreciating assets in one list, and we can start developing a plan from when we want to stagger them in, and choose to or to not address them now, or when we would address them. Again, that's not a, that process isn't going to say we want all of these this year, but we've got to have a full inventory of all of our assets and those that are depreciating and the condition that they're in, and, and a much more extensive road plan, I think, will be following as well.
I thought it was worth just recalling our previous dozen or so conversations about this, worth recalling and double checking with you, that looking over the city's entire bond debt schedule liability, basically, we're comparable, if not better, than a lot of other towns in the state of similar size and.
Definitely, yeah, definitely comparable. I honestly think we're better than a lot of the cities and towns in the area, just in the few that I've looked at, and obviously, you know, where we sit, our population size. If you look on page six, it shows what our total debt schedule is right now, and to have only just over $1.1 million in debt, just, and that's not including the enterprise funds, but that's really not that bad. And obviously, it goes down to $870,000 here in a couple of years, so like, it's just going to go down. And I agree, we need to slow the spend, like Steve said, but the problem is, people have to slow their tires because they're about to bust one on the road, so these roads are, are getting a little rough, so I think it's something that needs to take place.
The other interesting thing I saw was that when it comes time to pay principal and interest, those yearly payments look not dissimilar from our yearly road budgets, which were just kind of like patching holes, as you say.
Yeah.
Not really increasing the yearly spend, paying it over time, obviously, but getting a whole lot more money to do now.
Yeah, a lot of cities, like I said, they, they formulate these plans, so every year they're, they're kind of going out to bond or ban and taking on these big projects like this. It's not, obviously, common to try to write it in the budget to do, you know, over, almost close to $2 million worth of roads, it's just not, it's wiser to spread it out. Obviously, roads should last, you know, 10, 15 years, you know, you'd hope, if you do. Yes, sir.
I think, I think that speaks to, I think most people in Ellsworth would be quick to complain about the conditions of the roads, and it's not working the way it's being handled right now, which is trying to pay for it every year out of the budget. So to finance these roads over its lifetime, or a little bit less than its lifetime, is the only way forward, because just not doing it doesn't work. And if we did, took the bite upfront, taxes are going to go through the roof, we can't have that, we've already got taxes too high, in my opinion. So I believe this is the only way forward, is to finance the life of the road, maybe a little bit less, and, and as you know, I've spoke before about, you know, if we've got a five-year road, I don't want a 10-year loan. If we've got a, a 10-year road, then perhaps we have a seven or eight-year loan. I think that is the key part of the whole thing. And, but the way it's been going, no roads are getting worked on.
No, that's the problem.
And, and money doesn't go very far, so we've got to take a bite every year at this and try and make Ellsworth a better place with the roads. Everybody uses the roads, whether it's to walk on or to drive on. And, and we haven't been doing a good job with it. It's been pushed out and pushed out and pushed out. So this is the only way forward, I see.
I agree.
You said that bonds aren't typically used for funding road repair. Is that, is that the case? Is that how other towns do that as well? They usually do the bonding for roads, or was that Ellsworth that just wasn't tapping into that potential there?
I could say it can be a mix. So some, some towns do fund within their budget, year to year, you know, a certain amount of, of road funding. And then some cities and towns are on a, on a banned bond cycle almost every year, they're adding more. So it kind of depends, I think, to Steve's point on, you know, and this city's been in a mix of both of those as well. The road maintenance, I think we, we do put in the highway budget for a fair amount of the, the general road maintenance that we're going to go through. And we talked a bit at last Finance Committee, too, on, there is a highway capital reserve account, and, you know, we do have a local roads fund of about $320,000.
$320,000.
I think I remember offhand, so there is outside of this additional funding available to go forward with that, but it's kind of a mix on, you know, what the condition of your roads are, you know, how much your debt schedule is for making those decisions. And it really, especially last budget cycle, became clear that looking at the cities and towns, that bonding for these, these big priority roads is going to be important. And then, to Nancy's point, you know, we do on thriving communities, on village partnership initiatives, the municipal partnership initiative, MPI, I think that's the right acronym. There's other road funding from state, federal, as well, they're redoing High Street, the state in Surrey next year, so, and then we have to choose our next MPI on what we want to do, and there might be some other options there, so definitely not the end of the roads conversation. And if the council were to move forward on these, I think these are the most priority critical ones, you know, we immediately move, kind of the first step of the next infrastructure plan, too, is a full inventory of these roads. And then what we can hope for in five years, if that thriving communities partnership was to come through, could be in that category, you know, what could be in the VPI, what could be in the MPIs, and really start staggering these going forward, so.
Ellsworth has historically borrowed for the roads. Actually, I think we borrowed for Beechland Road, we borrowed for Christian Ranch.
Usually, the reconstruction.
Reconstruction.
But for maintenance paving, that sort of things, we tried to pay for it throughout the budget process.
Okay.
And that's what I was saying, I think it's wise to have a budgeted item for that smaller stuff, but the bigger reconstructions and stuff like that, that's common, I think, to go to bond.
I think right now, it's like $1.2 to $1.5 million for one mile of road before reconstruction.
Right, but if you're going to make a serious effort at getting multiple roads done, you're going to want to ban and bond.
It's not like. We're doing some maintenance for this one because we're so far behind. But you don't, you don't skinny mix or do, you don't bond for those because they don't last long enough for you to pay it off. So it's, it's kind of a balancing act of, of what you're actually, and maintenance, and, you know, you do crack sealing to try to keep them, the water out of them so they don't deteriorate quickly, that kind of maintenance is all ditching, all of that's taken care of through their maintenance budget. Got you. Thank you.
And just to clarify, in authorizing the ban of up to $2.795 million, we're not, that doesn't mean we necessarily spend every cent of that in the ban, could, we're really authorizing up to that.
I'm glad you said that. Sorry. Yeah, for instance, I put, I think, 2.1 in for local roads, but I think the estimates are like one, just under 1.9. Obviously, I went a little bit higher, but yeah, we don't, we only spend, obviously, what we pull out, so we don't pull that out.
And that was at the recommendation of Jim Siles in our Bond Council.
Yeah.
That you have some contingency built into your ban, because you're still only going to pay what you draw. So even if you carry the ban in 2.7 or whatever it's getting carried at, if you only take 1.8 out of that ban and turn it to a bond, that's what you pay for, you don't pay for the 2.7.
The, the other piece of this is, is you don't want to hold a ban too long, because it's interest only, plus interest rates are falling, so we probably will only, hopefully only ban for what can be done in 2025. And so if we can't get it done, then we can do another ban the next year and do it that way, but this covers you just in case. We get lucky and all of a sudden the paving people can do everything we want them to do, which, I mean, it's a, Councillor, can I?
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, it's fine.
Just a couple of things. So I know that you were saying that the 2.1 is for local roads, and then there's other things on, through this ban, which I think would be a good idea to kind of go over some of those things. which I think would be a good idea to kind of go over some of those things so the public understands. But before you do that, the courthouse access road we have on here for $50,000, this is something that I feel that you could take out of the budget. It's in your local roads. We don't want to finance something because we don't even know exactly how much money it's going to cost. So personally, I would like to see that pulled out of this order.
I would agree.
Yeah, that was brought up actually a few hours before this. Obviously, this was printed and ready to go. It looked nice and I didn't feel like crossing it all out with pen, so.
So Tammy will do the motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Before we do that motion, do we have the money? Does the city have access to the funds to do the work that we, regarding the courthouse environmental survey and legal work?
It does. So we have a pretty significant amount in the local roads and we still have remaining contingency. I think one of the reasons I was, you know, we went back and forth on this was, you know, I have it up to, of my own authority, to up to $15,000 for specific. And we have been talking as a council and a community on the need to consider these alternatives. But I also like to be transparent. I think Finance Committee meeting, anytime we're going to spend something, I typically talk to the council about. So part of the request for a ban was also in some ways like an indication from council that to proceed forward and that this is the majority view of the council to continue to consider courthouse alternatives and to continue to spend, potentially spend money. I don't think it'll cost nearly $50,000. I think the next step, as we discussed at Thursday's much more lengthy workshop, would be a full environmental survey of the area to continue feasibility. That's around, I think, $7,500 is around what that would be as the next step. And again, but I, you know, that's, in some ways, part of this piece was just a little bit more of a more formal designation from council that they're okay with me moving forward with things around that. But I can still do that with Finance Committee meeting without violating rules or anything either. So, and we're being very public and transparent. I think anybody wants to go to the courthouse website to look at things there. And a gentleman made some excellent points earlier today on funding and the consideration. And that is something for council to consider. I think I really wish I could have found an alternative location that was right on the road with access to three-phase power and everything else. This was pretty clear from the council and the community, probably the next best alternative with a few complications, which we went through at length last time around. But I'm totally happy to pull that off and we could still move forward with. And, you know, we're talking with a lot of our other partners here. And if there's any piece of the process where I feel like the feasibility is not there, that's, you know, what I'll report to council on. And before we go any further in surveying or the potential easements, we'd have to come back for bans with much more specifics on road costs. I don't think that $200,000 wasn't...
That's not on it at all.
No, I think it was, initial estimates were around $700,000, but that's to do in-house for materials, et cetera, et cetera. But that's such a, you know, without surveys, without the environmental reviews, without a bunch of other pieces, that's just too ballparky to go with at this time.
Is that a technical city manager term? Just checking.
So, to be clear, this discussion is only about the bond anticipation note or known as ban. Any further expenses on this courthouse access road will come before the council?
Yeah, I'll probably start bringing them to Finance Committee meetings to discuss.
But will come before the council?
Yep, on Finance Committee meetings, we'll talk about it there. Unless it was to exceed $15,000, at which point I would have to get council approval for anything like that. The, I should also note to your point, Steve, it's just the request here is to pull off the banning for that as part of this project or as part of this ban. The other projects that are on there is a plow truck, which we lost one of ours earlier this year. It was totaled, so we have a little bit of, of...
So the plow truck was totaled. Originally, we were looking to maybe buy a used plow truck to replace that one. However, that plow truck was sold out from under us. And then we had a phone call from Daglin Houghton. The problem that you have with plow trucks is if you order a new plow truck, it typically takes a year to get one. And we need one this year. It just happened that Fair, Daglin Houghton notified us that they have a brand-new, fully-equipped plow truck that will be ready to go in December. And so the thought process is that we are able to purchase that plow truck. We checked on another plow truck as well, another, so Callaway Diesel gave us a quote on another vehicle. So we checked with Fairfield that does the outfitting of the plow rigs and all that stuff. And currently, they're 40 trucks behind. Any truck that you send to them, you're not going to see. You might not see it next winter, but for sure, you're not going to see it anytime soon. So we had estimated 300 for the plow, came in at 256. It's built, ready to go, it's being held for us if we decide to go forward. And that was all our situation for this year. You know, and then we could get back on cycle next year, looking at the fleet and whether or not we need to do something next year. But at this point, time is pretty critical. There's not a lot of used plow trucks left on the market at all. We had two that we were looking at for 75 grand each. They're both got sold. So, yeah, it puts us in a, in a hard spot right now.
And I should also note, there's a few other, there's the Surrey Road Water Main contingency.
Yep, so the Surrey Road Water Main project is going forward. It's been funded, but they didn't, there's enough funding through grants and loans that we took to have any contingency in the project. And you don't want to do a project that big without having contingency money in case something happens. And so in the case of the $200,000 for the contingency money, it could get spent or could not get spent and just never get drawn down. But to have that funding available when that water main project starts in spring is kind of critical in case we do run into some issues that require additional funding.
What's the entire value of that project that's been grant-funded?
I think the bid came at $1.5 million.
And I should also note, should council decide to move forward with this, you know, looking at a pretty extensive memo with an introduction from myself and details from our finance director, as well as like the current debt schedule we're on as well, that we'll be happy to post online so people can get a little more detail. And it also includes every name of every road that's going forward.
We can read it. I can read it.
No, we're good. But yeah, this was incredibly interesting. This was great. So this could be put online so the public can see it. That would be great.
Yep.
Shout out to More, ITNate, everybody.
Can I ask one question, too? What is the capitalized interest?
That was, I don't know. No, that was recommended by Jim Safian. I guess that was a way to put that into the bond. And I don't know if you have, I'll let you say.
Oh, is that what they're doing? We're not expensing it, we're capitalizing it so it can be paid on bond.
Right, so we don't have to vote to go, you know, when we go to permanent financing.
We don't have to vote, it's all there.
Authorize that as well.
Thank you.
I'm like reading about it on Gatsby trying to get...
Isn't that great? Isn't Gatsby just so fun?
I'm sitting there like, eh, no.
Put that into layperson's terms, is that a polite way of saying that all of the interest is paid on the credit line, gets financed again?
No.
Is there any of that?
Yeah, it is. Try this.
Okay.
Well, if you don't pull it out, so this is just the authorization for it. You're not actually going to pull that $170,000 out.
Yeah, no.
So it's just the authorization.
So we're going to pay the interest and then we're going to, but we are going to finance it in the bond.
Right.
Finance that, yes, you're right.
So basically, you're paying the interest and then that's going to get financed, all of the interests for up to two years is going to get financed again over whatever the life of the bonds.
It doesn't have to, but it's allowing, it's saying, it's capitalizing it so you can. But it's not saying we have to, when we do the bond.
You can choose to pay it upfront. Or you can choose, to your point, Michelle, it gives you the authority to package it into the bond.
Right, right, that's...
Right.
Any thoughts of removing that?
We can at the, I would, well, I'd leave it to you, Steve. I would keep it in there and we can, we'll have that discussion again at the bond when we present options. Again, the terms of the bond, much more specifics there. I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle or Tammy, but I don't think this commits us to that at this time. And, but if there's four councilors or more that disagree with that.
We're going to have to pay the interest as we go, right? Right now, right?
It's usually up when we go to permanent financing.
You pay, you don't pay the interest as you go along?
Mm-mm. Usually, they just collect it when you close on this construction loan. It's not like we have to make monthly payments on it typically.
Yep.
I would say that's what, that's what I was under the impression of also, just what council...
I thought we still had to pay monthly interest. Did you didn't get any amortization scheduled?
Well, after, like, if it is approved, then I got a RFP, it's out to the local banks and stuff, so, for rates.
I would just imagine that we do approve this regardless, if we wanted to, we could pay off, you know, the interest. There's nothing saying we can't or that we have to wait until, is that correct? I mean, I think the bank would take our money.
Yeah, you're allowed to.
It just keeps you flexible.
Yeah, exactly. So Steve's fine, I hear what you're saying, Steve. I don't like the idea of, you know, using debt to pay debt. I mean, but it is, regardless, this vote here tonight doesn't commit us to doing that. It just allows that to be an option if we were to proceed that way.
The bank's going to loan us money for two years and not ask for payments and make an interest on it as it goes?
And I don't remember ever. I'm sorry, Nancy. I am so sorry.
Finishing this as well.
I don't remember in my years that we actually included this as part of any anticipation note either. So I'm actually okay taking it out as well.
I would agree.
Bottom line is, if we can't stand on our own two feet and pay the interest as we accrue it, we've got no business talking about the rest of it.
Take it out. Okay.
Well, just, maybe I'm getting a little confused. So this capitalized interest of $170,000, that's an, that's like an estimate about what the capitalized interest would be.
It's a very high estimate.
When we would go to take the bond out.
So if we took the bond in the spring, it's not going to be $100,000?
No, it's a very high estimate. In fact, I'll be quite frank, because originally, the ban was closer to 3.5. And we took some stuff out. And I know Jim Safian recommended around 5%. So he actually didn't change that amount. It should be 5% of the 2.79, so.
Okay.
But was it 138?
Well, maybe we should, if we're, this is a suggestion. We may, it sounds like we may be, and I'm, I'm fine to support taking the $50,000 out for the courthouse environmental survey work. So we do that, we subtract $50,000 from this number and then we recalculate at 5% the capitalized interest. And we can, just so we can know what this total number is before we vote. Is that...
I can do it.
Is that a monthly interest?
I don't know how many years he anticipated, how long he anticipated us to have that. The thing is, it's like $170,000 could be 5% of which numbers he... I'm assuming it's the whole. But what time period, I don't know.
Yeah.
So I can't, I can't really tell you without his calculation what he's...
So 5% is 140 grand for if you had it out one year.
And that might have been what he was doing.
And maybe he's bumping that up. But this is a two-year ban, correct?
I thought it was a...
This is one year.
Well, that's for that part.
Is the whole thing?
The whole thing is just one year? I thought we talked about two.
We talked about two, but we reduced it because all the projects...
Okay, so for one year, it's 140 grand and there's probably a buffer there. My point of that is this, is that if you're getting, if you're buying a five-year product, let's say, and you're not paying the interest as you go, now you're, you haven't financed it for a year and now you're calling it a five-year product. You're, you've got a debt for six years and you've got a five-year product. That's not healthy. That's where I'm concerned about. I think we need to pay the interest as we go.
Yeah, however, we didn't budget for the interest this year. So, and the point of the bond is to spread it out over multiple years. So we, you know, if we're going to pay that interest now, I'm going to have to use it for undesignated fund spending or some other piece as opposed to packaging it with the bond and then budgeting for the interest and the debt schedule next year moving forward. That's kind of the, you know, so that's why I would say. So I've got, if we're going to do that now, then we didn't budget for a debts, you know, a debt of that magnitude in year one. And, so again, that's, we don't have to make that final decision tonight. I would just say to keep the option open.
That's my question.
So, hold on just one second. So if we're deferring the interest, then we're not paying it twice?
Right.
We kind of are. If we're deferring the interest and we could either, at the end of this ban, we can pay the interest instead of paying it through the year.
Right.
I mean, keep our own money, right?
Right.
And our interest off it. So if that's what the plan is, that's, that's great for us.
Inflation spikes to 10%?
Right, I am with Steve, though I don't want to have interest and then bond it later.
And if, the solution to that would be shorten the term?
Yeah, we could, we could also consider that as part of the actual bond issue.
I mean, wouldn't, if you're going to, you're going to play with the interest, if we shorten the term of the bond to make sure we're not over-financing, we're not, we don't have a 10-year payment plan for a seven-year road, that's my...
Which we absolutely, because we can do those by project. That's what we normally do.
Yes.
Is, we don't bond the entire thing for 10 years or 15 years. You have stages of payoff. So you have different principles.
And just to clarify, tonight, the vote does not commit us one way or the other. That's how we would pay off the interest.
It allows us to do it, yeah.
It allows us, it gives us the discretion.
Tammy, you had something you wanted to say?
I, honestly, we could approve this, get short-term borrowing from one of the local banks. And then next month, we could go to permanent financing if we wanted to. I mean, it's pretty quick turnaround time, so, yeah. It's just, this was an easier way to kind of get...
To get it going.
Yes. So you don't have to do it for a year just because it says this here.
Yeah, but I don't think, we can't go to bond until spring, right?
Well, if you're going to the bond bank, right. So, but if we went to, you can do still local banks.
To your point previously, our bond rate has decreased, but we would, you know, see if they're competitive with the bond banks. There's no reason not to, if...
If we're going to bond in spring, will we pay the whole thing anyway?
Yes.
Yep.
I mean, you pay the $170,000 if you do the bond in spring. Three months from now, six months, five months, done.
It'd be half the price.
Yeah, and another word of, way of saying it is deferred interest.
Yeah.
Is what it is, so.
No, I'm just trying to clarify because we keep talking about 140, 170, whatever, but that's for a year. But if the intent was to go to bond in the spring, then we're not going to be taking on that debt. We're taking on whatever it would be until, if we do it in spring.
If you do the spraying, or, I mean, you could do it in November. But it's also assuming that we're going to borrow all of the money from day one. So it's going to be significantly less.
And that, that bond number is high. Like the plow truck is 256, we got 275 in the ban. We're not going to take 275.
It's really...
That's all I'm trying to point out.
It's really a discussion for later because, I mean, if the interest rates are good, we may want to do that and not take it out of the budget. I mean, it's, it's really, I'm never in favor, I shouldn't say never. I don't like doing that, but it depends. If we get back down to a 3% interest rate and we have the ability to borrow more or to spend more or get some other things, it's just, it's a, it's something to be discussed at the time so that you have all the information, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Right.
Thank you. I'm going to start wearing hot pink on this arm.
I got black.
I'm too far from you. I like the way the conversation is going. I think if, the question I have will lead to, I think if we leave it in as a possibility, clearly, a lot of discussion about the pros and cons of financing the financing when the time comes and if it does. And the question I have is I heard pulling the $256,000 out or the 275 from the ban, because we have this different truck available now, how are we paying for that?
And we're not, we're not pulling the, the 275 that's in the ban is for that truck.
Okay, I thought we were talking about pulling it because you found something.
No, no, we were always gonna have a plow to get a plow truck in the bond, but we thought we would be a year out before we'd ever see that truck. Because it takes so long to get them. So it's a rare circumstance where we actually have one that's available right now. And so we're trying to pull the trigger on that.
Right, and so that's borrowing we would do immediately in order to get that truck. Okay, and not pulling it from the van. Thank you. Good.
Yeah, like, and then the.
And then the other thing I would point out is, and one of the other reasons that would do the local roads, if we do the local roads. So let's just say it was budget, we're budgeting the local roads. So right now we have $320,000 in the budget. That's not gonna do enough. That's really any good as far as getting roads done. Just to say we had, the way we've been doing it is if there's, even if there's $2 million in the budget, you can't commit that money until the budget starts. So you have to commit it after July 1. And it makes it difficult for you to put bids out in the winter time. Especially when this is, when the, when we're looking to drop the mill rate, one of the first things we hit is the local roads. And so this is also part of the reimagining, because like Michelle said before, I can't put something up to bid that we don't have funds to commit to. So the ban allows us to have that. The ban allows us to say, we have funds that we are allowed to commit to these local roads. So then I can put them out to bid in the winter when contractors are hungry and they don't have all their projects lined up. And then, once those bids come in, then we can look at them and we can say, oh, they came in over, they came in under. So this is what we're actually going to draw down from the ban. And that will be the real number that you would want to look at, blocking. But that's, that's one of the advantages of the ban at this moment is because I can work with my guys and we can get these things put up to bid in the winter time when they're looking for stuff. And I have other things going on too to help with that, but I'm not gonna go into it. That's the key function for me of these local roads is I need to have, I need to be able to commit funding to the roads if we put them out in the winter time. So that when those bids come in, I can say, come to you guys and say, here's the bids. Are you ready? If you guys say yes, we commit to the bond and then we do the roads.
And then we're kind of first, first hit in the spring to let the roads are of temperature and that they can be done. And we're on those project lists and we're not fighting in the middle of the summer to get in somebody's plans. So it's kind of the pencils up winter as we've called it.
So if I could summarize what we've all been talking about for a while. So right now we're looking at 2.7, sorry, I should have.
2.795.
2.795. The discussion has been to remove the $50,000 for the courthouse road and also to possibly remove the, the capitalized interest. And the discussion on that is even if we keep it in here, we still have to make the decision when we turn into, into a bond whether to use it or not in the bond. So, that being said, does anybody else have anything else that they want to change in?
It's not a change, but a request to Nate, when this goes, when you post this document up on the web, we had talked to the finance committee last week. Page four is the beginning of your memo, of outlining even in this summary, number three, existing debt obligation. That the annual debt service is just over 2 million, but it's really important even in the summary to highlight that a million of that.
Okay.
Pardon?
No, you were gonna say the enterprise.
A million of that is the enterprise funds and then why that's different, that that's paid for by the fees.
Okay.
You do highlight it in the graph, but a lot of people just, we just have the capacity only to read the summary. So the city itself outside of sewer and water, which is paid for by the users, has a million dollars of debt right now, I think. Be able to highlight that as it gets posted to the public would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, after all of this, we do have a public hearing and I'll open up the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this?
Raymond Williams, 56 Hancock Street. I'm basically in support of this and as I understand it, where I think you're going or where I think you should be going is to take the 50,000 courthouse access road out of this, this resolution that you're considering tonight. And you're gonna do that and as I understand, that is, I, there's no way you're gonna build a road for 50,000. You don't need, isn't any way you're gonna get your basic legal work for the easements, title work, and then the engineering to build a road, sewer and water for $50,000. So that should come out and if you've got the money somewhere that you can use it, that's what you should do for that.
That's for, that's just to clarify on that. That's just for an environmental review and the. And survey.
I think it might be for some of the legal work for, the title work for the easements.
Yes, yeah, it's those three things.
Potentially, okay.
All right. Now, I would just note something the way at the beginning, there was a public hearing notice separately in the American. It was past week and the week before.
Yes.
The two times. So it was, it's there, so you can do this. Now, it's my understanding that the actual resolution you're gonna be adopting tonight is this three-page thing that I think probably came from bond council. And this is what you're going to do, and this is what you're going to do or need to do tonight to even get this started. Is that correct?
You mean vote on that?
Vote on this, yes.
For the amendments.
Yes, and modifying to take the 50,000 out and then whatever you decide to do on capitalized interest, which I don't have an opinion on that. You can do what you want. I can understand what, what they're doing with it. But I want, but I think this has to be adopted and then you can go.
Oh, we can't. We have a lot more on this agenda.
That's yours, so. But I, I'm basically, I'm basically in favor of it, but I want to basically make sure that I think this access road stuff should not be in it. Oh, oh, then the other thing, the Surrey Road Water Main. If you, you have this 200 available and if you need it with the money you already have, is that gonna be enough to complete that when you get started on it? And when are you starting on it?
Spring.
When in the spring?
We gotta have a pre-construction meeting with Sargent Corporation, they have one to bid.
Oh, they go, okay.
And so once, sorry, we sit down with Sargent, we actually are looking at maybe do some pre-work this fall on cover that's existing in front of the museum that needs to be replaced. We're hoping that it's part of the contract that they'll do it this fall, so we don't have to do it this fall. But other than that, we just say in the spring that we'll be doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this? We'll close the public hearing. Who wants to read the three-page order?
You ready for a motion?
I am, yes, but every council like.
Order authorizing the issuance of up to $2,575,000. $2,575,000 of the city's general obligation bonds and notes in anticipation thereof to finance multiple local road repairs in the amount of $2,100,000. One plow truck in the amount of $275,000 and $200,000 for the Surrey Road Water Main.
Ask for clarification.
Yep, absolutely, because I do too.
So Tammy, that number, did you take out the courthouse environmental work and then all of the capitalized interest?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And can I just get clarification? So what is, what does removing the capitalized interest change? Just the amount of money we can take out in the ban?
Yeah, and I'm wondering if we'll have to forward fund that. We're gonna have to fight, budget for it, so I'm gonna have to.
I'm, no, because it's deferred.
It's deferred anyways.
But I think what Jim is saying on that is even if it's deferred, we still have to approve what's being deferred, correct?
I think you can, if we were to borrow all of this for the entire year and we were to roll everything over into the bond, I think they're authorizing issuance of the additional 170,000 that would become the permanent financing.
But if we did all of this in the spring bond meeting and, but without the 180,000, we'd have to pay, well, I guess it wouldn't be 180,000, but it would be, we'll have a bill of some sort.
We should have some savings in some of these other things that I feel like.
That we would have enough, because we don't have to, my, my only question is, do we have to approve the financing of the interest that's being deferred? Because it's being deferred in this fiscal year. I think it would be safer if we put that in there just in case and then make the decision on whether or not we include it on the bond at the end. Just in case, because I would hate to go through all this and then we have to come back and add on to the ban because Jim says you have to, because we have to, we have to have a budget for everything, right?
Maybe things have changed. I mean, I don't remember ever having this in any of my council orders as finance director. However, laws have changed in the last six years, so seven years.
So I can amend it with everyone. Counselor.
Just food for thought here. The numbers that already have some beef in them. Like the $200,000 Water Main, that's a contingency amount that may have to be accessed if something went wrong. I can't believe that, and we don't even know, when, when you put this out to bid, we don't know what the conditions are gonna be when, when they come back. We just assume that maybe there's no interest payments for the one year, but we don't know that.
Yeah, I think the, the, but the flex in there is still relative to the project. So I think if you don't include that contingency or the capitalized interest piece, we can't use something to pay this at a few, in the capitalized. You know, we can do the reverse of that, which is not, you could have zero capitalized interest paid in, in this year. We'll figure that out the next step. But if we don't add that capitalized interest, like we can't at a later date decide, or we're gonna have to redo this process or potentially.
I just, I'm trying to think why Jim would do that and the only thing I can think of is, is because we're, we're agreeing to an expense, right? So we have to be able to finance every bit of that expense. I think in, and again, it's been 10 years since I've done this. But I think it used to be like it was a construction loan and that we paid for the expense out of debt service in our budget. And we never capitalized it, but I can't remember ever having deferred interest for a ban for a year. But things are different. But I, I would ask the council just to be careful. I mean, it's not like money we're gonna be spending. It's on paper and, and if we don't have to spend it, we obviously won't. But just in case, that's why Jim put it in here. I, I really think we should include it. We're not gonna spend it without permission. And it definitely doesn't mean that we're gonna bond it. But it may mean that's what's paying for the ban interest, which is an expense that we're not covering in this ban without it.
Yeah, no, I'll definitely come back.
Yes, I follow that.
I'll come back with the options on that, which is more definitions on the capitalized interest and how it would affect things and then, or not to do it.
We can't, it would be easier if we could just do it now. And then, I mean, we can know whether or not we, why you did it, but.
Yep.
I don't know. Yep.
I agree with you, Chair Beal, in that regard, especially because it doesn't mean we're being committed to bonding that. And it allows us to have flexibility moving forward. Steve, you said you, you, you talked about how the capitalized interest is around 5% and you would.
Well, someone said 5% and I come up with 100. If it was total.
That's what.
If you advanced everything.
That's what Jim, that's what Jim Safian said, 5%. Like I said, originally it was around 3.5. He did 5%, but it's obviously like if you pulled it all out, date one, which is not gonna happen.
But I think if, I always trust Steve's calculator. If it gets 140, then my thoughts are is that I would, I would move that we continue to keep the capitalized interest in this, but bring it down to 140 and also back out the 50,000. So that would bring us to a total of 2.715. So 2,000, $2,715,000. That still removes the courthouse access. It keeps the capitalized interest, but at a lower amount. Maybe I'm trying to slip too much.
I'd like to second her motion.
Okay.
Let's, let's start from the top.
No, we have, so we have a motion on the table to remove, to, to, for the bond, to remove the, the, I'm sorry, the courthouse access road and the capitalized interest. Discussion? So if I can in the discussion, if you read the order on the bond, it says that these items are thereon, if any, to be used and hereby appropriated to pay a portion of the costs of the following projects. So he's including the interest as a cost, which it is, even if it's deferred.
Regardless of how we pay it off.
Right. So we would either need to appropriate from the budget the interest that's being deferred or include it in the ban and decide later. Is the way I'm reading this, but maybe I'm, again.
That's, that's my assumption as well. And we could do that, you know, we could, there's local roads money available. We could, you know, not, not fold the interest into the ban to finance in the finance, but.
We could also do that later, though.
We could also choose later. One gives us the double option. The other one is we're committing to that policy decision now.
And the interest may not come in at 5%. The interest comes in at 3.5%.
I'm sure he's not doing 5% because of the interest. He's doing 5% in anticipation that we're not gonna spend all this. Because the 2, 2.7 million includes 170 in interest, so we're already 170 bonded. He's picking up average.
I, I agree with councillor here, oh, no, Steve, sorry, I'll just go Steve.
It's easier.
I agree with your sentiment and I agree with your reasoning. I just, I have concerns about screwing this up now and not leaving us that flexibility. We can change it later. So I don't support the motion as amended and I'll vote against it.
So we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I believe we need to keep the financing of the interest in here for that flexibility, knowing that this is, we've discussed it for at least a half an hour this evening and it will be more if we have to use it. But if we pull it out and we find out that that was an essential piece for the points Michelle has made, that delays the ban, which delays the purchase of the truck beyond its held till December 12th or something. We're not saying we're gonna use it. I totally agree with all the caution on financing your financing. Totally get that. But I would not support the pending motion either because of the uncertainty that's around this table on what the implications are for pulling it out. I do agree that it's not ideal unless, like you said, we don't know what's happening with interest rates. But we need the flexibility because we don't fully understand why it was put in here to begin with. It doesn't mean we commit to it. So I agree with Patrick's points and would, would even ask, as conversation goes, another option is to propose a friendly amendment to undo that portion of it, depending on how others felt. Or ask the, the motion maker in the second about editing the motion.
So we can either vote or, and I.
Oh, and then have another motion.
And I prefer to, I prefer to vote and then have a second if we, if that fails, where we already had the, we've already gone through three quarters of the motion. So any additional discussion? You would like to do this differently? Okay. So all those in favor of the motion for the 2.795 bond minus the courthouse access road and the capitalized interest. All those in favor?
Because I made the motion, do I have to vote?
That's why we had discussion. Okay, all those opposed? The motion fails? Do you want to make another motion?
Can I make another?
You absolutely can.
You make the best motions, Tammy.
You do.
If it, Percy, don't succeed.
Right? Try, try again. Order authorizing the issuance of up to two million, seven hundred, fifteen thousand dollars of the city's general obligation bonds and notes anticipation thereof to finance multiple local road repairs at two million, one hundred thousand. One plow truck at two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Surrey Road water replacement for two hundred thousand. And capitalized interest in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand.
Second.
There we go.
Time.
Well, wait a minute. Hold on. We have a motion and second discussion?
I don't think the total amount was right.
Because you changed it to forty thousand. She took ninety thousand out. She took the, she turned it, moved it down, the capitalized interest, one hundred and forty thousand.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Does that make sense now?
Sorry, I thought you were leaving the one seventy.
No.
Okay.
No, we just changed it to one forty.
Okay.
On your math.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Wow.
Barely.
I'm exhausted.
Can we get a confirmation at some point about?
Yeah, I'd like to know why Jim did that, if that's why he did that. That would be great.
Madam Chair, also hopeful to say who Jim is.
Oh, I am sorry. Jim Safian is the city's bond counsel. He's been our, wow, he was the bond counsel back when I was there. So he's been here for a while.
Where is he now?
Oh, he's in Portland, but he's with.
Pierce Satwood.
Pierce Satwood. He's a really good bond counsel.
Yeah, he's.
All right.
Good evening.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I got to call the order.
Oh, sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself.
That's all right. Agenda item fifteen, council order number one, one, two, four, zero, one. Public hearing and action on amendments to the City of Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-four Personnel Ordinance. Now we're.
Hi. Carrie Taylor, HR manager. So I have printed copies of the personnel ordinance with the amendments, with the proposed amendments in it for anybody that may like a paper copy. Everybody good?
Is it a lot?
We were, we had access to.
I think we had access to.
We did, yeah, we did. It's just we just wanted to have them just in case anybody would like to have a paper copy in front of them because it is a lot of information. All right. So first set of items, and I did highlight most of the major changes in the memo for this. And the biggest item on the list is the addition of the Maine Paid Family Medical Leave Act that goes into effect January first. So we are required to pay a one percent. I've been referring to it as a tax, a one percent contribution on all employee wages to the state of Maine. And with the exception of the police and clerk unions, due to the timing of their collective bargaining agreements, those units do not actually have to pay in until we renegotiate this year. So probably starting in July for fiscal year FY twenty-six. So with that being said, we just wanted to add some language into the personnel ordinance to reflect the law. And we have provided information to all of the employees that this will affect so that they are aware of that change. The next thing is we did add some language into the personnel ordinance for the performance evaluation process that we have adopted. This is just kind of clarifying this for department heads and employees so they know what to expect. It kind of provides just some guidance as well for everybody to know, like when you come in as a new hire, you'll have these performance evaluations set up with a schedule that everybody is required to follow. The next item on the list is amendments to the city's, or excuse me, the personnel ordinance dress code. I do not know the last time this was updated, so I cannot provide that. I wasn't able to find any documentation on that. I do believe it's been quite a while, so we've just tried to add some language to state sort of that. There are some departments that are not public facing, so provided that they work with the city manager and the department head to determine appropriate clothing for their department. But it's all laid out in there, but really it's just kind of trying to update it and get things that are more applicable per department. The next largest piece of this was the addition of Juneteenth to our holiday list. This is something that we have kind of been talking about for a while and just haven't brought it to the council to propose it. This is, you know, something that is state recognized by the state and federal holiday. And so we're just proposing that we add that in to also recognize that date. And then the additional revisions are just small things that I did note, which is number five on the memo that I provided. So new hire training, language, you know, just updating things to note that the human resources department handles that. Benefit eligibility currently, it notes that the department heads will inform new hires of their benefit eligibility. The HR department handles that. I am proposing to, so currently the personnel ordinance has that new hires are not eligible for paid holidays until after thirty days of hire. Proposing to remove that. Some amendments to the family medical leave language that's in the personnel ordinance, it's just clarification. Currently, the way it sounds, like I was confused on what it meant. And we just want to clarify that when employees are using family medical leave, the federal family medical leave, that they can use their accrued sick time or paid leave concurrently with that. So it's not something that has to be done separately because that is an unpaid leave. And then on, there is a, on chapter five, section ten, currently allows for the city manager to approve up to a hundred and eighty days of unpaid leave. I'd like to reduce that down to ninety. A hundred and eighty days of unpaid leave is a long time away from work and that does put strain on the department. So we'd like to reduce that, especially with the anticipated new paid family medical leave that this state is implementing, which cannot actually be, you know, taken until May of twenty twenty-six, but just trying to accommodate for that because it's a lot of time that could potentially have, you know, employees out of work. Chapter, there is a section in the ordinance that we would like to remove that currently allows for the advancement of a paycheck if an employee is going to be utilizing paid time off. So for example, if an employee is taking a vacation, we would, they have the option to request their paycheck a week in advance if they will be away. I think that that was probably written for when we were printing paper checks. We have all but like two, three, excuse me, employees that are on direct deposit. We just didn't really see the need to be advancing a paycheck since employees will get their paycheck direct deposited if they're not here. The next thing that I would like to remove is currently in the ordinance, we allow for employees that are retiring and it's retiring only. We're paying them a two-week severance pay. I'm not really sure, you know. It's not, because to me it doesn't sound like severance. So I didn't really understand the wording, but if you read it, it is, you know, anyone that's actually retiring would get two weeks equivalent of their pay. So we'd just like to remove that because employees, when they're retiring, do get paid out for any vacation or paid leave that they have on the books. We just didn't think that that was necessary. All the other proposed items are mostly updating just language wording of he and she to they and them, changing. Some of the language here, like designates a finance department as the department that maintains the personnel records. We just want to switch that over to the HR department, things like that. So everything else, I didn't know in the memo because it was just minor little things and just designating the proper department. My guess is at the time when this was written, probably those records were kept in the finance department, so.
That's it? Any questions for Carrie?
I like all of this. I had a chance to look at it. The one question I have relates to updating tattoos. And it's on page forty.
Sure.
I'm wondering why they need to be covered at all times if they also are required to not be offensive. Some tattoos are complete works of art. So just wondering what's, that feels outdated, like the things that you are striking. Thank you for being conservative of wearing makeup and scented products.
So excellent question. You know, really, I guess maybe this is me continuing to be conservative on that piece. The, there was the section, all right, I'm just sorry, just trying to locate it. Tattoos.
It's page forty below prescribed attire.
Forty-one.
It says forty here.
I'm sorry, maybe printed out as forty-one.
Okay. On the PDF or the Word documents, fourth.
And I have something on this, Carrie, if you want me to chime in.
Sure, absolutely, please.
Carrie and I, we, it's funny, I'm actually, as folks who know me, I'm usually dressed, you know, I like to dress up. So, but that being said, you know, that we've been working on this policy to allow some flexibility. Some departments, you know, don't necessarily need to be in similar attire to the city manager. The tattoos one was interesting. I think that was really the cover at all times is to kind of, the face tattoo is kind of the only piece.
That is.
And so how do you kind of, you know, so the coverage, but at the same time, like you're saying, somebody who has a really beautiful hand tattoo, I do feel like, you know, I wouldn't preclude them from employee and I wouldn't expect them to cover that up every day. So I could see altering this to be either just the face tattoos or just not offensive and no face tattoos.
I think.
I don't know.
I intended, and I apologize that this was not clear. I intended for this to be saying that like if the tattoo is offensive, then you have to cover it. So I guess, but I see what you're saying, like it must be, must not be offensive or shall be covered. And I think that, you know, my intention was to say. Yeah.
Or shall be covered. So the determination of offensive will be a hoot for somebody to have to deal with, but.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, excellent point because it's all up for interpretation, up, excuse me, up for interpretation on a lot of these things.
A lot of human resources is subjective, but that, and catching that it's the or is important. I didn't catch that earlier. And again, in a time when we're looking for, bringing in staff, there's a lot of demand for people. If this precludes someone from even applying for a job because they're not sure, that would be a shame.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And I think we did intend for it to be less restrictive than it currently is.
It is, oh, it absolutely is. I just wondered, and again, seeing that it's or and not and because very different implications.
No, great question.
Blow this up bigger so I can see it more. Then I'm comfortable with what you've got working there. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else for the council? You've got a public hearing also.
The, just so we're not totally surprised when we get to budget season, do you have like a round number of how much the additional payroll costs of the leave? I think it's point five percent from the employee and point five percent from the city. Do you know how much total that will be?
Just, just so you know, we did budget for this. So we did plan for this during the budget season. So we budgeted for the six months, January to July. And rough numbers off the top of my head, and please don't quote me on this because it's been a while since I've looked at that, but I think it's about eighty thousand for the entire city for everybody. Or maybe it's forty and it's eighty with the one. I think that's how it is. I'll have to check. I'm sorry, I will get that information to you. I did not bring it with me tonight, so. But it is budgeted and we did plan for it. It's not something that, you know, we knew it was coming at the time during the, you know, right now, actually at the time for budget, I wasn't quite sure on the union piece. It was a little confusing on how the state was going to handle that because where we have five unions. We were able to determine that three of the five will be subject to this. But with that being said, I can get the totals. I think it's, I think it's forty is what we budgeted, but it would be eighty with the one percent across the board, which is why we wanted to split, you know, and having the option is, seems fair to go, you know, the point five for the employee and point five for the city. Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? No, no, please.
Good evening. I'm Carolyn Heller. I live thirty-three miles away and I have a question. For the school department, Drummond and Woodson has advised us with regard to our unions that will be covered by this new law, that we need to consult with them on whether they would be willing to split, whether it be eighty-twenty or fifty-fifty or whatever, that it could be considered a modification to wages and thereby subject to bargaining. So I don't know if you guys have gotten any advice with regard to that or not. I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Close the public hearing. I'll just share a wish.
I move to adopt amendments to the City of Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-four Personnel Ordinance.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
Yes, thank you so much.
I know there's a lot of hard work in that.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Oh, I think you're staying up here.
I know.
Councilor number one, one, two, four, zero, three, public hearing and action on amendments to health insurance options in the City of Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-four Personnel Ordinance.
So I have prepared a short little presentation to try to explain this and what we're trying to do. If I stand here, am I in the way? Can you see?
I'm fine.
Good, okay. So currently, the city provides one health insurance plan to employees. We, you know, the goal here, we would like to offer a second plan to give people the option to choose between which plan works better for them. We've done some research, it's actually been in the works for quite a while. And, you know, what we, we feel like introducing a second plan will give. Will provide us with better recruitment options, will help with retention. Turnover has been very challenging and recruiting quality employees is, it's tough. And it seems that it's getting more difficult as, as time goes on. So we're looking at ways to do better with that. So introducing a second plan, you know, we can offer employees a greater choice. We can allow them to select the coverage that best fits their needs and their family's needs. And so we feel like this is a better way to support the employees and also increase retention and recruitment. So currently, we have the PPO two-five-hundred plan, the health trust offered through the Maine Municipal Employees Health Trust, which they're changing the name of the plans is going from the PPO two-five-hundred to the Pema Quid as of January one. We were recently informed that all health insurance plans through the Health Trust are increasing at seven percent January first. And the table here on the screen, this represents the city's current contribution for each of the health insurance plans based on non-union or union employees. So the wastewater unit and the clerks unit is encompassed in this non-union group because when they unionize, they chose to keep the cafeteria plan that the non-union employees are under so they have the same health insurance. So what we're proposing to do here is. I should back up, sorry. I just want to make the point, like, non-union employees started paying a seven percent contribution on the premiums. From what I could find through digging through some, all the records and storage back in from what I could find through digging through some, all the records and storage back in FY twelve, is when non-union employees started paying towards the health insurance. Prior to that, the city covered the entire premium. And they started paying seven percent of the premium. I cannot find any records, you know, between then and now, it's not increased. It's currently seven percent, and the city covers ninety-three. I'm proposing to increase that seven percent to ten percent as of January one to offset some of the increase that we're gonna get hit by the premium increase from the health insurance provider. With that being said, this here represents what the unions currently pay. Just it, the eighty-four percent for the police is covered by the city for single, eighty-three percent for fire, and eighty percent for highway. And you can see that that does vary for the union groups, for the employee-child plan and the family plan. These typically, for those units, do increase about one percent each year for their collective bargaining agreement. Sometimes they don't, but typically, it's about a one percent increase that they absorb a little more each year. So hopefully, we can, you know, the goal is to not increase too significantly to the employee at once. I'm thinking if we increase from seven percent to ten percent this year and then potentially look at another two percent increase next year to get the non-union employee contribution up to twelve percent from seven, but do it gradually, so it's not so, so much of a hit at once. So this next plan just kind of, excuse me, next slide just shows a brief overview of the deductibles, co-insurance coverage for the current plan that we offer to our employees. Any employee that's enrolled in this health insurance plan is provided with an employer-funded health reimbursement account. Non-union employees receive three thousand dollars for single coverage. Employees enrolled in the employee-child or the family get six thousand dollars per year in the health reimbursement account. This is something that goes towards out-of-pocket costs and does renew every calendar year, every January one. It does not roll from year to year, so if an employee doesn't use any of those funds, then it just, the city continues to keep that money. However, the fire and police unions do get a little, little more in their HRA each year. It's forty-five hundred dollars for single or nine thousand dollars for employee-child or family coverage. So this is the second plan that we would like to offer to employees. This is what was, well, is currently called the POC, but is changing the name to the Acadia Plan. So this plan is a zero-dollar deductible plan. The plan, you can see there in the third box of the table, is fifteen hundred dollar deductible for single or three thousand dollars for family. The Acadia Plan, we would like to offer it to employees, but with an increased employee premium, so employees would pay twenty percent of this premium. The, the cost of this plan is more expensive than the plan that we currently offer. So the goal is for the employees that would like to enroll in this, they would cover that additional cost. So it wouldn't be, this would not, offering the second plan would not, you know, exceed what we've budgeted for the year, for the fiscal year, because the employees would be absorbing that additional cost. For any employee that did choose to switch to this plan, they would not receive the HRA. That would go away. They would not have access to that. We would also, because the unions do pay significantly more of the premium, we are just proposing a one percent increase to their premium contributions for the Acadia Plan. But they do pay significantly more than the non-union employees at this time. This here is just a brief condensed version of what the weekly employer premium costs are currently and what they would be for the Acadia at an eighty percent plan coverage. So currently, under the Pema Quid, or, excuse me, the Pema Quid proposed at a ninety percent employer contribution would cost the city the one-eighty-oh-six for single, two-ninety-three-eighty a week for employee-child, or four-oh-three-ninety for family. The middle box in the table represents, so we budget fifty percent of the health reimbursement account for each employee. We typically are spending about forty percent of what we, of the one hundred percent total. So forty percent of the fifty percent that's budgeted. That middle tier in the table represents the city, what the employer, what the employer responsibility is with HRA funds. So you can see that, you know, it's a little bit more that is the employer responsibility with the HRA funds that we budget and that we pay for. Now, that's something that you can't really predict if, if an employee will exhaust their HRA funds from year to year. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. But this does, is a representation of what's currently budgeted and the cost to the city on, if we were to look at it on a weekly basis. And then the last tier of the table is what the Acadia Plan with an eighty percent employer contribution would cost the city. And then this is really teeny, and I apologize, I wanted to get it on one page, but now recognize that it's so small that probably nobody can read it. But this here is just an annual comparison for the various, you know, the single-employee, child, or family plans based on both the Pema Quid and the Acadia, and what that annual cost would be to the city. So it is, it is, where the Acadia Plan is more expensive, if the employee picks up the additional cost in their premium contribution, and if we remove the HRAs out of the equation for the Acadia Plan, it is not an additional cost to the city, it's actually cheaper. Provide, you know, with the budgeted HRA. You know, some of that is up in the air because we can't predict it, so it could, you know, end up evening out, or it could be a little cheaper with the, with the Pema Quid plan if the employee doesn't use the HRA, but those funds are budgeted. So technically, with what we can predict, the Acadia would actually be a little bit cheaper than, than what we've budgeted for.
Any questions?
Do you, is there any way to have a sense of how many employees are interested in upgrading to that Acadia?
Sure, yeah. We did, we did do a survey about a year ago. And, you know, it wasn't a lot of employees that were interested. It was enough that it's worth doing it, you know. Longer-term employees were more interested, you know. Employees that are exhausting their HRAs are interested in going to a better quality plan because the other plan isn't meeting the needs. So, you know, one thing that I think's really cool about this is we could, employees can switch back and forth from year to year, which is nice. And, you know, you're not, we didn't have a lot of response from some of the newer employees or employees that aren't utilizing their HRA. They have no interest, the, the current plan is meeting the needs of their families, so they're good. But it was, it wasn't a lot. It was maybe twenty at the time. Out of, currently, as of today, we have eighty-nine employees enrolled in health insurance. The survey, I didn't provide it to you because it's old, but it was, you know, it was about twenty employees who said that they would switch if an additional plan was, was offered. Now, that could have changed, and some of those employees may no longer be here, so I couldn't really give you an accurate number as of today on that. But great question.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so open the public hearing. Anyone have any comments?
Hi, Karen, Public Works Director. So January, I'll be like twenty years here. When I started in two thousand and five, health insurance was, well, employee covered it. I would try to use your points in your cafeteria plan to pay for that, so it limited the other benefits that you could take in until you made enough points to use other ones. Then we got to the point where we were paying a percentage of that premium. And then we got to the point where we decided to get rid of the POC plan and go to a lower plan. And frankly, it was not a good move for me or my family, and not a good move for a lot of families. I have health issues. I have diabetes. I have high blood pressure. My wife has health issues, my kids, not all of them, but some of them need medications. And the HRA doesn't cover it, where you go through it. And then at the end of the year, I'm, I'm using the, so I signed up for the cafeteria plan, so I take money out of my paycheck every week on that plan as well, so I have that money to use towards the end of the year. But the problem that you were running into with the two-five-hundred plan is, you know, with my diabetes, I go and I have my physicals and I have my wellness checkups, and, you know, they're required in A-1C. The A-1C is no longer covered. So every time I have to go get blood work, I get like a four-hundred dollar bill. And, yeah, the HRS, HRA will cover it, but, and then when the money runs out, the HRA won't cover it. And it's just, it's more important for me to know that I have some semblance of security when it comes to my healthcare and what's gonna happen to me if I have a heart attack or. Like, currently, I have bad shoulders, and I was supposed to have surgery on one of my shoulders. And I'm not doing it because I can't take on twenty percent of that surgery cost. The HRA is not gonna cover that. You know, it's, I don't know, it's twenty thousand, whatever that cost is gonna be, it's a lot of money. POC, I wouldn't have that. And so, I strongly, strongly advocate that we at least offer this plan, so that I'm willing to pay the extra money. It's worth, to me, it's worth it to my family. And I know there are other employees that are willing to do the same thing. And so I would strongly advocate that we be able to offer this plan, especially, like she said, long-term employees, older employees that run into health issues. It's, it's a better quality of life for them.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to speak? Alright, close the public hearing. Would you like to make your wishes?
Move to adopt amendments to Health Insurance Options in the City of Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-four Personnel Ordinance.
Second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor? You may leave. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Great job, really good presentation.
Thank you so much.
Okay, item eighteen, Council Order number one-one-two-four-zero-four, Request of the City Planner to Accept Ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars from the Lands for Maines Future Fund for the Purpose of Acquiring Two Hundred and Seventy-Nine Point One Acres of Land for the Branch Lake Expansion. And further to accept ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars from the Land and Water Conservation Fund for the Purpose of Acquiring Two Hundred and Seventy-Nine Point One Acres of Land for the Branch Lake Expansion. The purchase price for the Two Hundred and Seventy-Nine Point One Acres is a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
And yes, it was advertised as a public hearing, so there is.
It is a public hearing? So this is a public hearing? Yep, you're up, you're up.
Matt Williams, City Planner. So this project is about two years in the making at this point. And I think when I first became planner, it was like one of the first things I brought to council. But so, there's two long-term grant processes, Lands for Maines Future and then Land and Water Conservation Fund through the federal government. And the city has successfully been awarded both. They're both reimbursement grants in the form, earn the amount of ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars, totaling a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, the purchase price of the Two Hundred and Seventy-Nine Acres, Point One Acres. That directly abuts the current Branch Lake public forest and also abuts a lot further north, which is currently not in conservation easement, but as part of this full project would go into full conservation easement. I believe only like thirty acres of it now are in conservation easement. And then an additional seven-point-one acre lot that is on Pickrell Cove Way that then adds more, like, has a cove, so more, slightly more water access for potential public access to Branch Lake. And so the total cost to purchase the property is a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars with a bargain sale, much lower than the appraised price, which is somewhere in the two-hundred-something thousand. And I'm asking for the council to approve, to accept both grant awards, the purchase, or to get the funds to purchase the land. There are a few due diligence items that need to be completed still for the Lands for Maines Future program. I'm working on an environmental review right now, and then solidifying whether or not I have to do an additional survey or if the boundary survey I currently have meets their standards. But before the purchase actually happens, a purchase and sale agreement would come to council for approval as well, so.
If there's a chance that additional surveys will be needed, will you need to find out?
I would likely have to come to council for approval. I guess the cost of that would be above what Charlie could approve on his own.
Just a question, looking at the map, are we talking about purchasing the Herbie Haynes lot?
Yes, the red-outlined lot.
Right, so that says one-seventy-five thousand, okay, that.
That's an old number, so I'm not the first staff member to think about this idea, so that number is probably,
Okay.
Yeah, six years old or seven years old now, yeah.
I support this. I think this is terrific. I'm curious, is there a timber inventory on it?
There is, well, it's, again, a little outdated, but there is one from about six years ago now, five, six years ago now, of what kind of timber is on the lot.
What kind of timber is on the lot?
Great question. I do not know. I have it off the top of my head.
I just, my, my days as a forester, the Herbain's name comes up, but I'm, I'm impressed with being able to connect.
There was a forest management plan done for, well, it's for the, not this, the lot we're purchasing, but the, or potentially purchasing, but the Branch Lake public forest itself. There was a forest management plan done that outlined what kind of timber was on the lot. And there should be similar, I don't know if they have a second one.
At some point, there was. Just, I'm, I'm curious if you knew, it's fine. Again, the fact that it connects to significant lots the city owns is valuable.
I think also, you know, the importance of this land being in conservation for the water quality of Branch Lake is significant. So it's both the public access component is fantastic, and then also, this is, nature's the best water purifier there is, so I think it's great that the city would be able to connect all this land to support all those reasons.
And I was just at the recreation expansion is another asset of the acquisition. It was the focus of one of the grant applications, so plug it in.
That's great.
So is that the plan, is to expand those trails?
Yes, so after acquisition, and I'd go looking for funding for trail planning and finding out, you know, where the best layout for potential trails could be, but you could really expand the trail system. Currently, there's like three miles worth of trail in the existing public forest, but you could probably add another ten miles or so. And that's the additional lots connecting all three of these, or all four of the lots.
Frenchman Bay is the one that manages the trails right now, currently on the lot.
They hold the conservation easement, so they help us do boundary, what's the word? But they ensure that there's no encroaching on the boundaries of the conservation easement. The city crews, Public Works Crew does the maintenance on the trails in the public forest.
Frenchman Bay used to do, because we used to do it together. Their, their group and the city would get it, go in and do some.
So they do assist on our, when we do hold our, like, trail days, but largely the Public Works Crew does with chainsaws, clearing blowdowns and that sort of thing.
I will say, I'm very excited about this because the city spent about one-point-two million dollars putting those conservation easements in and purchasing that land so it could not be developed for water protection. And this is a great, a lot less expensive expansion of that, so I'm, I'm really excited about it, honestly.
Are you ready for a motion? I am absolutely ready.
Is it a public hearing?
Well, public hearing, sorry.
I thought it was, I'm not sure.
Alright, the public hearing is open. Would anyone like to speak on this? Nope? Okay, hearing is closed, sorry.
This is to accept the grant, but we have to spend the money before the grant. This is to accept the grant, but we have to spend the money before the grant money will come.
Correct, these are both reimbursement grants.
Right. So, this is accepting it, but there'll be at some point, before the council
Yes.
an authorization to buy the property.
Correct, yep.
What, what is the, the tax revenue that is being paid today and won't be paid if the school...
You did bring that in earlier council presentation on this. It's very minimal, but I do not remember what the numbers off the top of my head, but it's not significant.
Question to follow up on that, is it currently in tree growth?
It is currently in tree growth, yes.
And the purpose of that, of course, is to keep the tax...
Also the potential, it seemed like was not very high access and wetlands kind of prevented potential development.
Yeah, I mean, there is a subdivision on the lot next to, or you could see several lots that have been turned into a subdivision. And they're very wet lots, so you usually only fit one single family home on them at best. So yeah, it's not very high development potential in that area due to wetlands and just topography.
And for the record, this is potentially a net zero cost
Yes.
to the city.
The purchase itself would be net zero, I mean, I have spent like $3,000 on an environmental review, but for purchasing this much land, very low cost.
Now, does it take into account the value it provides for water, you know, those kind of...
Yeah, and then tourism to expand the trail.
I was gonna say, and increased valuation of lands around it because you are next to conserve land.
You don't ever have to worry about the back lot being developed.
And I will say, when the city does acquire the land even before there's trails, people are technically free to go hunting on that land and fishing or explore it, but just at your own risk.
I'd make the first motion to accept funds from the Land and Water Conservation Fund in the amount of $92,500 and authorize the city manager to enter into a service contract for the purchase of 279.1 acres at MAP 74, Lot 2, for the purpose of conservation and the expansion of outdoor recreation activities and those sort of...
Do you have a second?
We're just doing them in...
I assume you wanted to see them separately. They're listed as two separate motions. I can keep going if you want.
I think, because it's one agenda item, can't we do?
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't, obviously was it listing to you?
So, Abby, I was fascinating and I didn't trip over any words. I would add to that...
You did a great job on the first half of the motion.
Thank you. I would add to that motion, that we accept funds from Land for Maines Future Fund in the amount of $92,500 for the purchase of 279.1 acres at MAP 74, Lot 2, for the purpose of conservation and the expansion of outdoor recreation activities in Ellsworth.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, that's exciting.
The next item, 18, which is also a public hearing, so I am going to change this a bit. Council order number 112405, public hearing in action. On the request of the superintendent of schools to authorize borrowing of up to $135,000 through the state career and technical equipment bond program for the HCTC welding program. Bond proceeds are to be repaid by the Maine Department of Education.
Good evening, my name's Bill Tracy, I'm the director at Hancock County Technical Center. I have a couple other folks with me that I'd like to have them introduce themselves and we'll explain this a little bit.
Sure, my name's Josh Trimp, I'm superintendent of schools at Regis School Unit 25, in Bucksport.
Carolyn Heller, the business manager for the Elsworth School Department.
So this was a unique opportunity for us to use grant funds to replace a weld abatement system. As you know, our welding site is at Bucksport High School and is in need of replacement for both the particles and the noise. So that's something, we had this opportunity to go through this main municipal bond bank process, which won't cost us a thing. It essentially is, the Maine DOE is taking on that purchase and is going to buy that for us. We just have to submit the application, put it forward, and then hope to get funded. So I, we're willing to answer any questions you have about it, but looking for your approval to be able to move forward and do this.
Can I just learn a little bit more about the welding program?
Yeah, absolutely. So, we right now have 14 booths, so we can use AM and PM. They are absolutely packed. It's nice to have a busy program. The other part of that is that last year we worked on the process of adding four more booths, which means we can increase our capacity to 18 in the AM and 18 in the PM. But we need this ventilation system to be able to do that to meet the need of our, of our students. Many of our students go on to get their AWS one inch, AWS three eights, and then some do pipe as well. But it's something that we, we pay for those certifications for students that they can step into the workforce or move on to college and explore it even further, so...
So in high school, they're learning this trade and getting those certifications?
Absolutely.
That's great. And it's Ellsworth students, Bucksport students, and is it...
All of Hancock County that sends the HCTC.
That's great.
That's cool.
And I think, just to build on that a little bit about the employment. Employment and college success rates for the people who graduate from this?
I don't have those numbers right off, right off the top of my head.
I'm sure you have sense.
Yes, our students do very, very well, whether they're going right to industry, whether they're going to a two-year college, or whether they're looking to make that further.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Could you elaborate a little bit on the connection with the Bucksport school system and HCTC?
Yeah, so as you all know, you've been in HCTC, we, we are dying for space. So this, I don't know how long the, the relationship's been going, but when that program was put together, it was built at Bucksport High School because they had an existing lab. So it's just been reworked and reworked and reworked to add booths. So that's the reason why they house it there. Josh, you want to add anything?
I think this is our 16th year of the partnership that we've housed students at Bucksport High School. And like Mr. Tracy said, we bring in usually right around 15 students in the morning and then 15 students in the afternoon from students from Hancock County. So we have 30 students every single year that go through our welding program. And we have a really great retention rate, so most of our first-year students, we lose very few of them that come back for the, the second year. We were very fortunate, we had a, a private gift that allowed us of just over $30,000 to add the four new booths that actually our students built for us, so we were able, much to make that, stretch that money out. But because of that, and we always have a waitlist at our welding program. So we usually have three or four students that don't actually get to get in, which is always really unfortunate, but it's just, you know, part of the game. So by adding the four additional booths, but it's just an old system. And the weld abatement system is really important that we get those particles out of the air. It's also really noisy, the old one that we have right now is an interior weld abatement system, so we're actually gonna move that machine outside. And when OSHA came through, there was actually some concern about some of the decibel levels that the current abatement system has. So it was really important that we, it's something that we're gonna need to do one way or the other to make a more safe environment for our students and staff. And when we found this opportunity to go through the Department of Education to do it, well, we did need a fiscal agent in terms of taking the loan out through the bond bank, even though it is fully reimbursable through the DOE. There was a $20 million, I believe, grant that the DOE had put through legislation specifically targeting CTE programs. And we were one of seven schools to receive the first round of funding.
How many of the students that go right now are from Ellsworth?
I have those numbers on my computer, but I have it right off the top of my head. I'd say at least, at least eight, at least eight.
Yeah, typically it's about eight from, it's primarily almost all Ellsworth and Bucksport students. We get, just because of the travel, we don't get as many MDI students. We get an occasional couple students from Sumner High School and then a few from Darryl Stoneington.
Ms. Heller?
Help me understand, and I'm all for it, don't take this in any bad light, any vocation I think is fabulous, but help me understand why the Ellsworth school system is doing this for money going into the Bucksport school system? Or am I misunderstanding this?
No, you're not. We, we actually fought to have it so that we would be the ones that would be the, the town or the IRS 225. And we were told because HCTC is an Ellsworth School Department program that they actually have to be the ones that, are the one that is taking out the bond. So we actually tried to do it because we just thought it made sense where it was in our school department, but the DOE would not let that happen. We could not actually submit the application unless it was run through the Ellsworth School Department.
The welding program is a satellite program of the Hancock County Technical Center. So it is an Ellsworth School Department program actually, even though it is located off-campus. Similarly, we now have the carpentry program that's located in Sumner, at Sumner High School, but it's still our program.
You will see more of this as we continue to, you know, again, we've applied for a new school. But as this is going, our community need is big. We've actually, have in process firefighting, EMT, and medical assisting for next year, which none will be on-site. They're all satellite programs, which create their own, excuse me, their own challenges. But we've been very fortunate to have support from local businesses to house our students and our staff to be able to do those. But it's a way of getting creative around providing the need that we see in our community and supporting our students at that point.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so...
I just wanted to add also that if for some reason Bucksport decided they didn't want to house welding for us anymore, that equipment would belong to Ellsworth.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing, would anybody have any questions?
He's a great caller.
Close the public hearing. Counsel?
I would move to authorize the superintendent of schools to borrow up to $135,000 through the state career and technical equipment bond program for the HCTC welding program. The bond proceeds to be repaid by the Maine DOE.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting so long too, sorry.
I think we need a round of applause for the young man that's waited this whole time.
What's the minimum age of the city council?
Item, agenda item number 20, council order number 112406, request of the city manager to purchase to purchase four Level 2 EV chargers for Revision Energy with the majority of the cost to be reimbursed through an award program from Efficiency Maine.
Good evening, counsel, well, we've discussed most of the pros and cons, although I wasn't here for it. I think you have it in the memo in September, I want to say. So we did apply to the Efficiency Maine Grant Program for the EV chargers, and we were accepted. So, the request is to to take out of the capital reserve account $25,960.80 as the deposit so they can begin the design electrical, some work, and then with the expectation that they'll be installed in the spring. And that we'd also finalize our 2025 submission to the IRS for a tax credit, which I've done further research on. They specifically in the IRA redesigned the tax code so that municipalities like ours that don't pay taxes and other types of nonprofits could take care, advantage of these tax credits, even though it doesn't offset it because we don't pay taxes. So we will likely be eligible for that, which would further the total out-of-pocket cost of this $130,000 capital investment to about $10,863. Once this federal grant reimbursement comes back in and the, uh, the, and all future funding from the chargers themselves will, you know, upon install, probably to have a further discussion about what rate we'll set at it. I think it was, you know, it's 24 cents a kilowatt hour is what most ratepayers are paying right now. A lot of folks are charging around 54 cents, but I do kind of a competitive market analysis before we set that. So the expectation is, you know, we won't have full future figures on how long it'll take to recoup the city's investment there, but and I'm also looking into additional opportunities for fast chargers to be added next to these, what they call destination chargers, which are much faster than an outlet, but still when you compare those two together, they can really drive a lot of traffic down here. I should also note that you may have seen in the news, the Efficiency Maine has kind of maxed out all their tax credits for electric vehicles. There's been a pretty substantial uptick in EV purchases, even in Maine, over the past three or four months, so you know, we'll, and they do not have to be dedicated to EV chargers, so for not, or EV cars. So if we're not seeing a huge uptick in usage, especially in the non-tourist months, we could open up to other parking if, if need be there. And that's pretty much it, but any questions, happy to answer them.
How does the public know that they're there, once you install them?
That's a great thing, I think I was gonna work with Mora on kind of a comms plan for these and to really, you know, they'll, so they'll be on, you know, we'll get them on Google and we'll get them on the public charging access networks. So, you know, it's like, when you pull them up in your car, they'll be immediately available. And then, but I'd also probably want to highlight on our website and just, you know, that they, that these are there. Because one of the nice things about them as well is people could be driving into Ellsworth, and they're gonna go somewhere else in Downey Secadia. Between here and Machias, there's not really any charging infrastructure. So if you're going down east, this might be your last chance. And if some of the fast chargers are full, this is, you know, you'll be able to come down here, charge for a few hours, and then shop with the downtown business owners, that's why they call them destination chargers. The idea is people would come here, charge up, city makes a little bit on the charge, and then the customer spends a good bit of time in the downtown. The fast charger component can help out with that too. If, if the fast charger was there, they would sell themselves. You can, I've seen these when they get co-located, people are trying to queue for the fast charger, which you can charge at a much higher rate. There is a much higher fee when you're using that much electricity there too, so over the long term, would want to have both installed. The other piece, see if and when the city goes to more electric vehicles, when they become class competitive. We just did a, I don't think you were here for this tab, but we did a lease discussion on kind of going to more of a lease arrangement for vehicles over 100,000 miles and the pros and cons behind that. Somebody who supports this type of technology and especially the future of it, I think, but it's, even now, they're still more expensive to purchase the EVs than the gas-powered cars. Plus, for a lot of our type of cars, they don't, they're not technologically, range-wise, needed now. But in the future, if we, if those do become more competitive and if they become cheaper than the gas cars, because there are much less costs for maintenance and for, then we can switch some of our municipal fleet to and potentially use those chargers for that, so.
Did this grant cover any sort of specific signage, things that would be put in front of them directly saying, you know, two-hour limit? Or we would have to kind of decide what we want the rules to say and make our own signs?
Yeah, I think we'd have to do the signage besides the, what comes up. You can also brand them with the local business owners if we want to open that up as a potential, you know, there's pros and cons to that. You know, to have other advertising in our signage, but I could see doing that. You know, so I could look at that painting as well, we'd have to paint them. And, you know, we do our spring painting every year, I'd probably include it in that. But, and then we had some long discussions about signage, some of the parking kiosk conversations and just the need here. So I would definitely potentially include that as well.
Could add a turn to our welcome signs, now with EV chargers.
There we go.
So, that brought us another question. I know that there are, I think, two chargers on the Merrill Park on Franklin Street, are there other? And those are owned by the city. Are there others owned by the city?
Not owned by the city, there's other fast chargers up at the McDonald's, near the McDonald's.
Right, but those, so I guess, not related to the motion, but I think there's been informal discussion about starting to charge for the EV charging at Merrill Park, that parking area, because it's, I think people expect now to pay to charge their vehicles and it's appropriate.
Yeah, and they, those are, are full up most of the time. I, I want to get a cost for those, and once we add these ones, I, I would consider a few things, maybe just taking those out once we have four, pay-for chargers by the city here, that that would be, but maybe not. Maybe we add a sign for, you know, those aren't really technologically capable and we can't do a, we can't make them pay-for chargers due to the grant funders that fund, we could, we could have them pulled out, or we could add like a suggested donation, which in terms of signage, actually somebody offered, another business owner switching to a pay-for model as well, asked me recently if, would we... as well, asked me recently if, would we consider, you know, taking their, their other chargers? And I said, you know, yeah, you could put those at the marina, and another sign that says, please pay for this, but I'm not quite sure that'll make as much money as where, so I'm kind of hesitant to go to non-paid-for infrastructure pieces, so. But I think we can get.
I mean, to your point, I see what you mean, but it's not just adding a meter to those, but stick a Venmo QR code.
I think we're gonna, that's the reason I.
And people might choose to like, I really am glad this is here. Here's three bucks.
The reason I thought of that was they, that's what they do at the, there's an inn in Castine, and it just has a little sign that says, go to this website, please pay X dollars per charge. I think it was 10 bucks a charge. Okay, we could maybe just see if that, you know, and I think for some of the folks.
I don't see a downside to doing that.
I don't either, so I, I will definitely pursue that, and maybe even prior to, I mean, get a little money for signage, but maybe we do that, and we also send it to the capital reserve account and just see how it goes, and if it's, and just to get out one estimate, how much, how much will be paid for those, those chargers as well.
As I understand, there was a grant that paid for the charging for a while, but that expired at some point.
I don't know if it paid for the chargers. I don't know if it paid for the charging.
That was what I had heard, so I'm not sure.
No, I think, and I remember reading that initial discussion. It seemed like.
While we're doing this, and I think, again, EVs, it has evolved to the point where I think people expect to pay, or businesses put them out as an incentive.
Yeah.
But, again, city-owned property, we ought to be capitalizing on it and giving people an opportunity to support the city with something other than property taxes.
Yeah.
This is another way to do it.
Absolutely.
This is not a public hearing, but would anyone in the audience like to speak on this or ask questions?
There is an app if you've got an electric car, sorry.
I was going to say, there's a, yeah, there's an app for that.
There always is.
PJ Keenan, Ellsworth Chamber. I can't remember if it was Mark Plait from Stanley Subaru that told me, or Cara and I learned it at Women's and Wheels at Darling's. So, there's plugs for two of our big dealerships, who both sell electric cars. They, there is an app that you can get to when you are asking about how it promotes. So, if you have an electric car, you're going to have that app on your phone, and not only is it going to tell you where there are chargers, but it's going to tell you if they're available at the time you're looking.
With the rates, too?
I'm assuming.
Yep.
Yeah.
And these ones are like USA-made and top-of-the-line, like new editions, retractable, easy to just kind of tap your credit card against, they're very user-friendly.
Cara Romano, Director of Heart of Ellsworth. Just to answer Counselor White's question about, am I the first person to call you that, maybe? Just to answer your question, or possibly kind of coming up with a couple of ideas as far as marketing goes, on the downtown map that we have that's in the Franklin Street parklet, it has a little icon on there, maybe they need to be bigger, but EV charging stations are on there. We did that last year, and perhaps maybe in the Chamber's Business Guide?
Yeah, we can put it in our guidebook. Are they on your postcards, too, right?
They're on the postcards, too. Yep, so that's one thing, and then I'm sure with, with Mara and whoever else at the city, we can come up with more ways, maybe sort of like a total, you know, kind of like quick one-page or marketing, whatever, that we can do to help, but I know that PJ and I can help with that in any way.
Love it, ma'am.
Thank you.
Raymond Williams, 56 Hancock Street. I have a couple of points. I can't, I can't get some of this crazy stuff through my head. How many cars are going to be serviced from these four things? Or charging stations?
It's really to be determined. I actually talked to Revision Energy about, could I reach out to their cities and towns, get kind of a revenue expectation to try, and they said, you know, they're all so different, you know, where we're at, the adoption of EVs. I could tell you those ones at Franklin Street are, are pretty full up most of the time that, so, and then over time, you know, we're at, it's going to be more and more and more of, of electric cars, so.
How long does it take to charge?
So, on this one, you know, you're probably at a, it would depend on the size of your, your battery. If you're in a hybrid, it's going to take 30 minutes. If you're in a car like mine, that's a full electric, you're, you're probably at like six hours to get fully charged. It's like 280 miles.
No, no, my question, my question doesn't have anything to do with that.
Oh, I thought you said, how many people use it?
No, I'm talking specifically to this diagram that you have here. You have four charging stations. How many cars are going to be charged by each of those four? Do they do service two or, or one?
Two.
Okay, this is my point. In this place here, and for your handicap accessibility for one of them, which takes two parking spaces, as much as I can figure out, you've got at least nine parking spaces that are going to be taken away from regular people that use them, and I can tell you that this parking lot out here is full almost all of the time, and so you're taking away nine spaces that are used by people, at least nine that are used by people. I think that has to be taken into consideration. I, I know full well what you're going to do, so, but you, you've got nine here, and another thing that I just, and there was also, there was a public hearing scheduled for this.
I don't think so. There isn't.
Yes, 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 there was. Notice a public hearing, Monday, November 18th, 6:00 PM, request the city manager to purchase four Level 2 EV chargers from Revision Energy, et cetera. And, and it was, it published in the American this last Thursday and, and the seventh.
Does it say public hearing for it, or just? Oh, that's the agenda.
It wasn't in the agenda, but there was a public hearing notice, a separate public hearing notice.
Oh.
That was published. And the, one other thing that I had, which gave me some concern, you're, you're doing this deal with Revision Energy. Sometime within the last week or 10 days, I saw in the Vanguard Daily News, a news article that they were laying off a substantial number of employees, and I believe the figure was 30, and is that going to have any effect on going into this deal with them?
I don't believe so.
I think you should check into that.
Two things, I've had pretty recent conversations with them as part of the depositors for this piece, but happy to look into that article. I hadn't read it. I also note, one is, as mentioned, it was a concern of mine, maybe next year in December, this isn't, you know, we don't need potentially eight. You could configure each of these to be one for a Tesla-type car and one for a non, so you could have them on the same space, but there's no requirement that they have to be EVs only, so maybe it could be a seasonal thing where during those, those times of year when we're trying to drive more tourists down, they're utilized, good, and then, and then other times of the year, they're not, they're not required to be EV-only. I'll, I'll look into the second piece, of course, we wouldn't want to move forward, you know, we have a contract, these folks, they are a certified B corporation, and so, you know, it's pretty reputable standards for, for revision in this area, but I'll, I'll take a look at that article.
Yeah, definitely would take a look at that, make sure the state's still happy with it, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will the chargers, will we have access to data from those chargers? So, we take a year, we look at them, we see how often were they used, make some decisions after that?
Yep.
So, I am going to call. If that was advertised as a public hearing. So. Let's open the public hearing. We've already heard from some people. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing. Counselor Heller?
I have, I have some questions. I'm all for electric chargers. I'll be the first to admit that we're only sticking our heads in the sand if we don't look into some sort of advancing the electric charging world, if you will. One of the things that haunts me about this is I went to the Main Coast Mall, and I'm speaking about the chargers behind McDonald's, and they tell me that they rent their spot, each parking spot, for $35 a month. Revision Energy put in the entire system, and Revision Energy takes all of the revenue. So, they went in at a net zero cost and no risk, because they're renting their spot for $35 per month, okay? And this receipt that's in our packet, I'm guessing, is one of those receipts. It says 225 Main Street, and I don't know if that is the Main Coast Mall or not, but, I'm sorry, High Street. Where did I read that? High Street, 225 High Street.
It is the Main Coast Mall.
It is?
Yep.
Okay. So, the way they explained it to me is that Revision Energy approached them, they lease the spot for $35 a month, Revision Energy does it all. They take the revenue, they did the install, they did everything. And I realize things change. I don't know how long they have been there, and maybe that was some program they started with and don't do, but I would love to leave this to private enterprise, and let's let the city, even if the city doesn't charge for their spots, like Main Coast Mall does for $35. Leaving this to private enterprise, I think, is a better solution for the city of Ellsworth. Now, maybe that option is not available any longer. I don't know how long they have been there, but I was interested to see how that worked. What do you know about that?
Yeah, so, separate program, that's the fast chargers, and that's a much bigger investment. That's like a, ones of that caliber could be 6 to 100,000 to a million-dollar charging. They're fast chargers, so they're a much, a bigger draw as well, so, you know, and I'm on that exact point, Steve, you know, we're not, that was, that was the, part of the reason I want to be more involved. I think that those could be of much higher value if they were here, in our downtown, servicing all of these customers, as opposed to, like, when I've used them a couple times, go to TJ Maxx, maybe wander in Harbor Freight for 40 minutes, and they're full. I mean, there's three or four cars waiting for them all the time. And, you know, I've kind of reached out to Efficiency Maine, and, and I'm trying to figure out, you know, how we can get the next round of, of investment in this type of infrastructure at the 1A1 corridor here, which will service a lot more businesses. I think it would have been a much higher value for the city if you have worked with Revision to get them anchored here, whether they're keeping the funding on it or not, but it is a very separate program, and if we were to go to fast chargers, I'd probably, and it's a 200, $300,000 match from the city, you know, would really want to have a much better expectation of how much it's going to be for us to get that back, but it's a, it's a different program, and I think partly the reason I think they're in the, not the best place for it right now.
For the city, but not for them. I'm sure that.
Oh, for them.
For them, that's a great place to put it, because that's where all the traffic is.
They got money out of me at TJ Maxx.
But it's not the best place for the city, yet.
Yeah, I feel like that's, and that's one of the reasons I really want to, I'm hoping to try to encourage for a fast charger, so you've got down here, so that people that are going to Bar Harbor, or the Island, or MDI, going to Machias, that, you know, they can pull right instead of, instead of queuing up at the McDonald's and TJ Maxx. No offense to those businesses, and the Mill, it's a great support there, but, you know, spend an hour here, spend two hours here, one hour in the destination charger, another hour in the fast charger when it's available, and, you know, and, you know, support our local businesses, so.
So, the proposal before us is not the same charger that they have?
No, they have a very different charger. Two very different chargers. They're, these are destinations, I mean, they're much faster. I think of it like electric outlet, versus a dryer outlet, versus, you know, this destination charger is a much, much bigger, and then what they have is, like, that's the big, that's the big stuff. That's, you know, a ton. You don't want to use those technically for your car, a ton. It's kind of like a, because it's just, it's, it's, it kind of wears down your battery a bit, but it is the, right now, the fastest way to get, to get juice, but a very different charging system and, for their chargers, is the fast chargers. And right now, we're not eligible in Ellsworth because of that piece, but I, I do think that in the future, that's here, and Steve happy to talk a little further, too, and to see if there might be another option, if those chargers were to come, that the city wouldn't take any risk, but I also feel like, you know, I don't know about risk, but it would depend on the, the total dollar amount. There might be a good reason to co-anchor those together and for the city to gain revenue for, you know, a long time, and for the, and not give the parking spots away for 35 bucks, but, but I definitely want to look into that, and.
Counselor.
So, I want to, I, I support this for several reasons, it's a way to serve people who are, who are coming to town or who live here, but somehow don't have charging capacity where they live or work, but it is also, when we were through the budget process, one of our goals was to identify additional revenue services to broaden our base so that we're not as reliant on property taxes, and this does exactly that. And private sector can do it where they're already doing it. The more of these, I think, will be appropriate, and, you know, with that, with that app, people will know that they're here, and more people, I think, will stay instead of drive-through. I have a friend who came to visit, I don't know, two summers ago, maybe, maybe when she got to my house, she'd already used the app, she knew that there was a charger walking distance of my house, and it was part of how she arranged her day, and I think that's what we're going to find with these. So, the businesses will be stronger for having people come in who maybe wouldn't have, and we've got an additional source of revenue, which relieves some of the pressure on property taxpayers, so I support this. I think it's a good plan for those reasons.
Just, thanks for that info, Steve, too, about that other piece up there. I'm going to look more into that and the fast chargers. You know, I, I am scheduled to meet with Revision, some of their folks, we're going to have a, or not Revision, Efficiency Maine, to kind of talk about when the next application stage for the fast chargers would open. There's like a middle level, too, between these and something else, it's like 60 amps versus those ones, I think, are like the 200, so there's all these ranges, but, yeah, I think we'll see more and more of this.
You're really amped up about this stuff.
Oh, my God, that was.
It is not Friday. It is not.
That was, that was not electrifying.
I'm pretty amped up to make a motion to move to authorize the city manager to expend $25,960.80 for the capital reserve account as a deposit with the Revision Energy for the installation of four EV destination charging stations in the city of Ellsworth with the anticipation that additional federal tax credits to be realized in 2025, and all future income generated from the charging stations will be reimbursed to the capital reserve account.
Second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, item 21, executive session to discuss personnel matters in accordance with MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6A, and I will add, can I, I will add that we will not be coming out and making any decisions, so.
Madam Chair? Hey, we have a break?
We are going to take a break.
Awesome. Got my head turned out.
Just take about a five-minute break?
I can take like a look at the Franklin Street chargers and maybe back out.